Yeah, got it. All right, I'm ready to start. We'll call the meeting. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Hope everyone is well out there and surviving our current situation with this virus. And we'll start off right off the bat with Jim has been working with emergency management issues in Ladona. You want to brief us, Jim?
Well, briefly, there's not much to say out here. Federal government, of course, on the thirteenth issued a declaration. The governor and Kelly issued a declaration of emergency. We have not in the county and Ladon and I don't intend to recommend that until such time as we have a COVID-19 case either in Lincoln County or Saline County. And that's close enough to go. Upon declaration of an emergency, one of the, among the other things it does is it leaves you of a lot of goofy little rules and little irritants. To give you an example, and I won't give you any for this, but if we had a major tornado come through here and we declared emergency, we'd call all the debris out to the county trash cans that I've been through or anybody saying anything about. If we have an emergency and people are required to go home for two weeks, the federal government and part of their money is going to pay those two weeks salary and given me without team left and their salary made. So that's a big help. It'd be a big help here for people that have been employed for six months. If they go on leave without having a reason for this wish that we didn't do. So far, I see no problems in Lincoln County. CDC did a briefing yesterday, yes, Sunday coming back. They anticipate about a third of the United States population would get this disease. And they anticipate somewhere under two percent will die from it. You know, it may be exactly three, but the over eighty year fifteen percent will die. So I think it's personal and the role of the administration. That's the pros and that's what they say. That's all we know so far.
Yeah, and we've heard it on TV, radio everywhere for last week.
Wash your hands often, ten times a day. The big problem you're going to have to have is do I sing the happy birthday? Do I sing the ABCs? And what do I sing while I wash my hands and make sure I do it all?
Got Cindy?
Yes, the agency on aging and meal service wanted to let me know they're not delivering, or they will be just delivering meals every week and not by having people come to the clinic and it's the type of virus that agents are experiencing. Also, the North Central Agency on Aging has issued this. And it has depends on what you should do in percent three and that is the.
Okay.
In the courthouse today, they have just posted notices and signs. You may not go to the third floor of this building without a mask on.
Okay, well, thanks Cindy. And I guess if anyone, anybody feels ill, we should probably call your doctor or stay home. As we, of course, we knew that earlier. That's kind of common sense. Anyway, so I'll move on here then. We'll go to our correspondent here. From Jay Hall, we have Jay Hall's phone number here. Says Elaine Ballers had contacted him regarding complaints received about executive sessions and members participating over the phone or Skype. He is offering to come and visit with the board regarding coma and executive sessions. So maybe we could do that sometime. Get Jay Hall come here and maybe we haven't been doing our executive sessions correctly or over the phone Skype. So we'll maybe call him and hey, he can, I mean, he can hopefully inform us what, how we should operate better or whatever.
Yeah, why don't you give her a call?
That's okay. Okay. Then we'll move on to the next correspondent. And also, I was gonna say Alexis called in this last night. She's got a child ill. We're not DM, so that's where she's at. We didn't, so we won't be here. Okay, we have a AIA document, G eight zero two dash two thousand seventeen amendment to the professional services agreement.
Okay. So when the historical society reviews that agreements that we have done, it's in the same these two components. So this is a agreement that the city agreement that was previously approved for. That's pretty important.
Okay.
So I need you to do that in order to grant funding to get this up.
We need to approve this. Yep. This, so this is amendments to an agreement for this AIA document. And the additional provision shall apply to the contract to Kansas State Society, Department of Interior, Comfederal General of the United States. Of course, so I'm trainer HL, which is the company we hired to get us a review of this. Okay.
One of them actively lives with community their information policy and they're taking on the legacy. Actual three and four.
And we need to sign this here?
Yes.
You want to review it first, Jim, before we sign things? They're already out. Looking over a little bit here. Okay, there's two of them here. So what these are, I'll kind of summarize instead of read the whole thing. There's a trainer HL, which is the company Jimmy hired to do a review of courthouse here and give us recommendations. They said they will not use their position for actual or apparent purpose of private gain for themselves or for another entity, particularly one with whom we have family, business and an enterprise. Number two, trainer HL will not convey inside information that has been part of the body of the public information and that would not be available upon the class. And then trainer HL will not either forth or with conversation engaged in teaching, lecturing or writing. This is a dependent on information obtained as a result of our participation with the recipient. So it's really similar other stipulations here that they face. So trainer HL will kind of have a, and bring with us that to, like, this personal information. Okay, Jim, you made a.
Yeah, that says the education teaching thing, that they can do it without permission, because that allows them to show what they have done here to somebody else, which is fine, I guess.
Okay. All right, so you made a motion now to.
I like the motion to sign.
Just sign both. Okay, we have a motion. Two, two things to sign here. The document agreement amendment to the professional services agreement. And then the, another transmitted document here, which basically says the same thing.
They're, they're one of the same.
One of the same. Do I need to sign both?
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay, I'll second that motion. And so we have a motion and a second to sign these AIA amendments to professional services agreement. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Need me to move you up? Need me to move you up and take you down? You've got stuff going on.
We don't have anything else.
Well, we're working correspondent. We can stop that. We do. Today is today. There's like sixteen. Arthur, whose birthday is this today?
Excuse me?
Whose birthday is it today? James Madison, you ever hear of him?
I know the name. And J may be my favorite after yours.
I thought he might be.
He was a manager at that. But in that journey, it was sort of respectful.
Right, yeah.
Here's Maureen, here's working on some, and I have to, and this was the same as when we were doing, and it's been a while ago. And Erica goes to places and conferences all at once together.
It's fine with me. We're in there. I was gonna do it next door, but we can live down your place. You thought you'd do it better than I can.
Okay.
That'd be great.
Okay, what I'm.
Keith, Keith Hobber is supposed to be here at one thirty. I want to see him again on the call too.
No, he's not gonna be here. He'll be on the call.
That's what I figured.
Do you want to?
We're not gonna, we're not gonna reschedule him until after the term of our stuff is settled down a little bit.
Well, that leaves about a quarter to one. We have to go down to our place.
Okay. We could take a reset. We could do a reset, huh?
Yeah.
Just Rhonda Ryder is supposed to come in and tab her.
He's not coming.
She's not coming, okay. Okay.
Actually.
Do you want to, we were still gonna do the correspondence, but do you want to go now?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, we'll put that off and just, okay, Ladon, go right ahead.
Okay. Well, just, just as an update right now, we still have no cases of the current virus in most counties. The governor has asked that all the schools be closed, just to slow the spread throughout the state. And so that's for just seven days, but those recommendations are going to change later in the week. There are some travel restrictions. We've been meeting with all of our partners daily or on conference calls and all kinds of things. So Lincoln County is, you know, preparing the best we can, but right now there's no cases, so we're just hanging tight.
Do you have a procedure or a protocol if you had a case on what you would do?
Yes, we have plans and everything's in place.
Would you with the hospital or the clinic?
Yes, yes. We've been meeting with the hospital and the clinic.
Okay.
Testing. I know that that's a confusing thing for people. If you have no symptoms, you will not be tested. So we are in urgency to not to call the hospital or the medical clinic if you have no symptoms or anything. And even then, there's some travel things that go along with it. And KDH has approved the testing. So you can't just walk up the door and get tested. So I want people to be clear about that. But what I'm here for this morning primarily is our grant applications are due today. We have the immunization action plan, which helps us with immunizations. Twenty-two, forty-three, seventy-four, is that enough? Public health emergency preparedness, we applied for nine thousand five hundred sixty-nine dollars. And then the state formula grant, which is matched at seven thousand for small counties, for a total of eighteen thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and seventy-four cents. The grant application form has to be approved by the chairman of the board of commissioners.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion for that?
Probably.
I'll make the motion for all the motions.
Signature date and then I sign it.
I'll second the motion for eight thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars and seven four cents in grants.
Okay. Did I make the motion or?
I made that.
Oh, you made the motion. Okay, I'll second that.
Or one way.
I, I think either.
He made it and I second it.
Okay. Either way, I made the motion on that side. Uh, yeah, and we have a second. So we have a motion and a second to approve the grant application for the county health department, the ones that are certified here. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn. Does it say that I am here or?
No.
Okay.
All right. I have right now.
Oh, okay. Well, thank you for coming. Do you have any, if you need us for anything? I don't know the procedures, but if you need Jim or I or Alexis for anything, don't be afraid to call me. You got my number?
Yes.
Okay, or text me if you need something. I don't know all the procedures. Actually, we've got to get involved or not. I'm trying to stay out of this and let you guys.
We're doing okay right now. Do you have a template if we need to declare a state of emergency? And I sent one and new one today. The first template has seven days, but the second one has sixty days. And we can do it for sixty days for this. But like I said, right now, there's no reason to declare a state of emergency in Lincoln County because we have no resources that we know of.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you.
But I'll be sure and let you know.
Yeah, let me know if you need.
Say you've had a quarter to.
Okay.
Quarter to one?
Yeah.
You should, I guess I could come too, I guess.
Well, it's classified information. It's up to your emergency man or whatever.
Well, then I won't come.
So let you listen.
Well, then I won't come. I don't need.
It's between the two of you.
I won't. Jim can handle it. That's fine. I don't need to go. Jim's doing it. We don't need all that many people. Okay, well, we'll move back to correspondence. Ladon will start. So Lincoln County Board of Commissioners, Blue Cross Blue Shield, Pathways to Healthy Kansas Grant Application. Who would make this thing? Lincoln County Board of Commissioners would like to stress that some support of a lot lives healthy, Lincoln County, delicious applications to Blue Cross Blue Shield, Pathways to a Healthy Kansas Grant Program for the Purpose of Improving the Health and Well-Being of Our Local Citizens. And that's just the voice of the district that just says, uh, we promote that. And that's what Kelly brought us to help you. Can we just make a motion, Ladon?
How are you going to say that you're free for a vote?
I'll make a motion to approve this letter from our, for the Pathways to Healthy Kansas Grant Application. Uh, the date of today.
My second.
Sixteenth, two thousand twenty. And a motion, second to approve the Pathways to Healthy Kansas Grant Application. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I please get the national line home to try to see if this is fine?
Sign them?
Go for it.
Sure. Need all three of us?
Yeah, everybody.
Or two of us today? And we'll go through a fill here. Okay, we've, the Lincoln Building Supply, we have a faucet for the kitchen in Lincoln Park Manor for thirty-seven ninety-nine. You see any trouble with that, Jim? Lincoln Park Manor faucet, kitchen faucet for thirty-seven ninety-nine.
All right, that's part of the six.
Yeah, so I'll just sign off on there. What else do we have here? We have a, from Heather Hill, the guy, Titty Clark.
Um, she's working at the hall.
Well, this is from you, Art. A draft resolution from the city council for the fundamental precept of American government, that the best government is that which is closest and acceptable, most accountable to the people. And whereas it, for this reason, that our constitution strictly limits and defines the powers of the federal government and what's reserved, all the name, and government fundamental functions to the states and to the people. So what, what is, is just some revolution art that you want?
Yes, and if, you need to substitute the county commission in there and replace the city council and any other corrections that you see that you want, that you would be happy with.
What does it basically, in a nutshell, what does this thing basically say? Can you tell us? What does this basically tell us in a, in a, in a short statement?
Asking your state representative, House and Senate to approve that application for convinced states under Article Five of the United States.
There's copies for each of you.
Okay.
And three, some of the kind of areas of this convinced state would be virtually right, local term and state and both, drive it over. The only, that would be some of the head area of that convinced state.
So this is basically asking us, as commissioners, to, as a body, commission body, to recommend to our state representatives to support this.
Yes, and this is to help me get pressure on them to do that. That vote will probably come up tomorrow. Have we not had this coronavirus? So I was trying to get as much pressure on the people to vote for the vote tomorrow. But this has kind of changed things. As I understand it, I haven't heard yet that they are not being sanctioned by, by the grid line. They may close the capital and not have, not being sanctioned for some big people.
Okay. Well, I don't think I want to do anything of this today.
As I have expressed to Art several times, this is not our business as a commission to sign. This is an individual citizen, but not as a governing body. We shouldn't be involved in that. It's not that I don't support it, it's just that the governing body shouldn't be.
Yeah.
We're trying to get all the, all the fifty states from a.
Right. I know if you had enough states, then you could, you could basically force Congress and the government to comply with the constitution.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got sixteen now, you need eighteen more.
I understand what you're trying to do, but I kind of agree with Jim here. I don't know that the body that we should, as a county commission body, actually approve this, because I think this should be up to the individual citizens too.
Yes, definitely. It's just us as a state asking.
Yeah. I think you should lobby your state senators and representatives to do it.
Yes.
But, but I don't think Jim and I, it's our place. Well, I don't want to, I don't want to say right now. I don't, maybe Alexis is different. We should probably, when she's here, we should review this and talk about it more, but.
And I'd be available at these times.
Yeah. I would, for something like this, I don't think we should table this today, okay? And then, if, well, when Alexis is back, we'll bring her back up. And, but I, I kind of agree with Jim on this. I think it's more of a personal thing than as a, as a commission initiated the action. But we can discuss that later, okay? Is that all right with you?
Yeah, well, you can discuss it, but I'm gonna be against it.
You're gonna be against it.
If you, if you sign this and you send it forward, as indicated from the Board of County Commission of Lincoln County indicating support for this, you're implying that or stating explicitly that every citizen that we represent is for that. And you may certainly have some citizens that don't want to do that.
Right.
We may have some, for whatever reason. But if we send that forward, the implication is that all of our citizens, and I think it's a good thing, but I think each citizen ought to be doing it, not as a county.
Yeah, I kind of agree, Jim.
And that's my sword. I call.
And for.
And I've said that before.
Yeah.
And, and we're, and fifty states, we have people in each house, district, at federal level, working to try and get as many citizens, you know, current with Article Five of the Constitution of Justice. Our full intent is just to reinstate the fact that Article Five does exist, and that's the only way to come. One, this is going to be amended. And so we're trying to work through the cities and the counties and the state districts nationwide.
Now, I see what you're trying to do here, but again, like Jim stated, I don't know if it's our position. But again, today, before we do any action on this, either not do it or do it, I, I think we should have Alexis here to have her input. And then we can decide officially what to do either way, okay?
And at any point, I'll just three balls if you want. Any additional information for me, Jim or Alexis for yourself.
Okay. Thanks. Okay.
I'd be available.
Well, thanks. And for now, so we'll table that. Okay, and we'll move on here to some more correspondence. We have some letters here from Gerald Vlad. This is to the Lincoln County Court, not after us though.
Yeah, I read them.
Okay. To the members of Lincoln County Commission, this letter conformed me that due to some recent events and actions taken by various members of this commission, I must regretfully turn down my appointment to the hospital board of trustees. I do not take this decision lightly, as I do respect the position of those I would have been serving, but it is the right decision for me to make at this time. Thank you for the opportunity and consider actually to be a member of the hospital board of trustees. Regards, Gerald Vlad. Still the U.S. Okay. So, uh, I guess we'll take no action on that today.
Well, yeah, he resigned before, he doesn't resign tonight.
Right. He resigned, but I'm just saying, we may have to reappoint some new person on there, but. Just so I'm like, I don't think we'll do anything today on that. We're talking.
I'm in the commission meeting. Can they give you back the call here in the mid-afternoon? All right, thanks.
We'll move on here to. Letter from the boards of county commissioners, Kansas County Commission Association. Notification of board vacancy, executive committee. The purpose of this letter is to inform commissioners in the North Central District, Highway Two District, of the vacant position previously held by Ben Bennett. This vacant position shall be filled by the executive committee of the Kansas County Commissioner's Association, as provided for in the constitution of the association. Former Gary County Commissioner Ben Bennett, representative of North Central District, and Kansas County Commissioner's Association Executive Committee, and was serving a two-year term that expires after the close of the annual meeting held at the Kansas Association, County's Fall Conference on Wednesday, October fourteenth, twenty-twenty. Interested persons through the North Central Highway District Two who want to place their name and nomination for election, this vacant position will ask a submitted letter of self-nominations with the signatures of four commissioners from four other eligible counties within the highway district. Letters can be mailed or emailed to one of the addresses as well as long as they are received on and before the close of business on Friday, it will be. So that's, I guess, if when Mr. Bennett passed away, he was on the board. And I guess, Jim, if you, we want to apply for that position, we could do that. So that, I don't know. That's, that's to consider if you're interested. Is that what you need? Whatever. For now, I think we table that too. Move on again to another letter from the county, Kansas County County Commissioners Association. This is the Board of County Commissioners, North Central Kansas, again from the same, KCCA, Kansas County Commission Association. Jim and I have been to the meetings there for commissioners to go to, you know, learning, training, stuff like that. Okay. The purpose of this letter is to inform commissioners in North Central District, the vacant position, that's the same thing. Same letter.
Those two of them, KCCA and KCCA.
Yeah, but they're former. It's the same thing. And then we got another one. Probably same thing too.
Was that?
They addressed you guys into the.
Yeah, that's what they did. They sent it to each other.
Oh, yeah.
You opened our mail. I go ahead and open yours.
Might as well say. Cause I'm sorry. I didn't look at Alexis's third of your government on there. Open your personal mail. That's probably a federal thing.
It is.
Well, I guess I have to, have to quit. Oh, well. That's the way it is. Now, this is to me, same letter. Instead of my pencil finger? I have a pocket out here, but I figured that would be a weapon. I thought the, the law would probably come over here and call me up. I have it. I don't need any more. Okay, we'll move on again. Another OCCK. This is OCCK, which is, uh, flying. This is just a news letter. Looking for courthouse spotlight. She and Elton Stout received this in this letter. It's associated, OCCK Inc., Incorporated, uh, you know, informational letter. I don't think they need to read that. There are three of them. I guess there's one for each of us too. Don Harrow, one to Don, one to Alexis.
Oh, it's, uh.
One's in here. And one county, come on courthouse one. Jim can have that and I'll give Alexis that one, since I don't want to. Okay. And then you gave us the handout of our monthly budget spending for it. I guess we're done then for now.
Might I make a recommendation, Mr. Jeremy? Why don't we see if we can get Rhonda and Sarah to come down? Uh, it's ten thirty right now. It's supposed to be Ladon and Ryan. Uh, it's ten thirty right now, it's supposed to be with Donna and Rhonda.
You can't get Rhonda because she's running the job coming from, uh, four, I don't mind, sure.
What time is she due?
She's not supposed to be here for a lot.
Oh, that's right, I know, yeah, yeah.
So, I can ask Sarah if it's a new one?
Well, I was just, I was gonna leave at a quarter to one to go down to that conference hall, and I don't know how long, surely that won't take more than half hour, so if I could come back, it's, uh, uh, Ron and, uh, Mr. Savior would wait a while. I guess, you know, you can do it. But if we had Sarah, she had a half hour, we have that one, and bring the short of eleven, we have those out of William, David at eleven thirty. Would that be all right?
Yeah, they're in the late time area, they're near the minute.
Yeah.
Maybe put it over.
I've checked them out, I didn't think probably.
What was you, we want to talk to Sarah about?
Whatever she has in mind.
Oh, the pay bill. God, I've reviewed this.
It'll take a minute, I'll drive in here.
Okay, yeah, I'll take a brief, five minutes. Sarah?
Good morning.
We'll take a little reset, Howard. We'll be back in.
When, when it quits raining, you're back?
Yeah, no, no, they'll be back in there. Okay, how are you? Surviving all the crazy stuff?
Surviving, it's gonna hit me, it's gonna hit me one way or another, so...
Yeah. Okay, uh, let's go back, I've reviewed, uh, I'm gonna make a motion.
I didn't, but I did.
Oh, I can't, I'll make a motion to approve the March ninth, twenty twenty minute.
I second the motion.
Yeah, the motion, and seconded to approve the March ninth, twenty, twenty minutes on Thursday, I, I, okay. And now, uh, we'll move up, thank you for Sarah for coming, uh, Jim may have to go leave his house, we're leaving early for a meeting, so, thank, do you have a...
I actually wasn't quite ready to discuss the pay plan.
Okay.
Plan on the, uh, but I would like to, not to get into the question, non-elected personnel for a conference that I can, uh, just include.
Okay, how long would you think?
Five minutes.
Five? Okay, I'll make a motion to move to recess of the executive session for five minutes for the purpose of discussing the status of a non-elected employee pursuant to KSA seventy-five four three one nine two Z, number one, to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, and to recon, and to be with the H R director and the county commission, and to reconvene in the courthouse, in the commissioner's room, when it's approved.
Five, five second, yes.
I'm just, I'm begging second to move the executive session for five minutes, all favor say, aye?
Aye.
All right, what's your carry?
It has, no, just...
Yeah, well, that's, why don't we delay, it's not that critical, why don't we wait for next week?
Well, we've, we've got plenty of time.
Right, and you got, and then next week, you're coming here anyway with, with, we talk about...
Well, plenty of time, we, we don't want to approve any, anything...
Right.
Right now.
Okay, sounds good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any other business, Jim?
No, no. David's here, put him in the hot seat.
David's not here.
I thought he was here. Are you speaking for him?
He's not coming till, you know, he's... He doesn't come until, uh, the very...
Well, I hope that he's here already.
He's doing his real job.
And Brendan is next at eleven, he should be here momentarily, then.
Do you have anything, Don, that you want to talk about? I think we've pretty well caught up for right now on our current, yes?
I've got something for you, I was gonna wait till the road was, guy was here, but, um, there's, there's signs on our road that says no construction vehicles.
What road is that?
On one twentieth road. No construction vehicles.
North of what?
On one twentieth road, any, anybody that lives on, on that Vesper Road north of, of...
What road is that sign on, the, the crossroad, Cowaw?
Well, it's not really a crossroad, but it's north of, uh...
Where do you live?
It's south of where I live.
Okay, that's about an iron, iron or, uh...
It's south of the home place, just a little ways.
Yeah, okay.
And...
You live about on iron there in one twentieth, right, right. Well, I don't know, when Brendan comes in, Brendan come in, you got to...
Is there a highway department sign?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, the drivers came in, uh, with their request the other day, to, what's happening is the trucks are going from courtside, down the fourteenth to the interstate and up to one twenty, and the, uh, wind towers people made the decision that they would turn around and go back down one twenty. The drivers wanted to go, come up through Vesper and back through Lincoln running empty, which wouldn't hurt the roads much, so, uh, Brendan went out and talked to them, and they worked it out, and so that sign is, as a result of that, they don't come, the empty trucks do not come up there, they turn around and they go back down where they came.
So, in other words, if I have somebody coming out to hold, well, like, say the guys want to take the loader from the home place up to my place, that's against the law.
No, that's...
They just signed it.
It may be against the law, but the purpose is to keep the, uh, wind tower heavy trucks from coming up the road, and that's their decision, the wind tower people made that decision, and Brendan put the sign up to assist the drivers.
We should maybe specify...
It has nothing to do with construction other than the wind tower.
We should maybe specify that, though, that it's not for Lincoln residents, this is for wind tower people, 'cause they're repowering one twentieth up there at Bison, which is south of you, and they're coming that way, and so, uh, that's probably what it's for, but that shouldn't, I don't think should apply to Lincoln County residents, like, if you gotta do your regular business...
Well, I know Larry has talked to the wind tower guy.
I don't think nobody, I don't think nobody's gonna give you a ticket, or the county, or the Hubbard Department, or the sheriff's will give you a ticket for anything like that, I don't think. Now, we should get that clarified here, Brendan will be in here in a few minutes.
I know Larry has talked to the wind tower guy, and he said that, uh, the county had asked him not to travel that road.
Larry?
Larry had talked to the wind tower guy, and the wind tower guy told Larry that the county had asked him not to travel, he said not to travel that road.
Okay. Bet you went and sit muddy and fluffy, probably, huh?
Well, I couldn't see where it made any difference when they were traveling, they're traveling empty, it didn't make any difference than if you took a, a grain truck over or whatever, 'cause we have grain trucks...
Right, semi, yeah, grain truck, yeah.
The other day, we had a box truck, I don't know what that was about, come up that road, and it was muddy or bad.
Well, Brendan comes in, and maybe he can explain this better. Thing is, if he puts a...
Most of the people that are, are working this are, are local county people, they're taxpayers in Lincoln County, you, you got Chris Behrens, and you got Abrams, and there's one other group that, that travels this.
Here is Brendan.
Okay.
And they buy all their, their fuel here in town, they're buying, they're staying at motel.
What was the problem? Why didn't it, what's, why is the sign there then?
I don't know.
Jim?
Brendan, uh, it's a highway sign, he clears up the result of the conversation with those folks, and it's for the drivers, it's not for anybody else, and if they took it down, it wouldn't change the traffic pattern at all. It is unclear who issued the instruction from the county that they could not use that road.
But Brendan, that's a, we didn't do it.
Brendan did do it.
Well, we didn't, I don't know.
No, we didn't, but what I'm saying is, a minor mischievous, who issued the order that they couldn't use that?
Just come right on, sit down, he's going back there.
We're ready for you, and we just had a question, since we're just discussing Brendan, about the sign on one twentieth, about, uh, no heavy equipment, you can travel that road or something, what was the sign?
Nothing in question, it was...
Why is that on there?
It's not there.
Well, she said there's a sign on there, is it because something to do with the, uh...
Probably for the...
The repower on one twentieth?
Right where the power lines are at, right?
Right where the end of the, no, that school, school bus.
Where is it?
That one...
Iron, iron, and from one twenty?
No, no.
No, it's south.
South?
Where the school bus, it just passed, right around Colt, one twentieth?
Mm-hmm.
We didn't put that sign up, they might have been themselves, 'cause they had sent out an email to themselves.
Oh.
They were running their trucks up through one twentieth and over to eighteen, and they had sent out an internal email last week telling their drivers that they're not allowed to do that.
They don't want them to come down one twenty?
They don't want, yes, going off route.
They wanted them to go, go around and go down to the highway fourteen, and then...
That's how they're coming.
They're going eight pack and getting rocked?
Yes, that's how they're coming in, and they were going up one twenty.
And they were wanting to take, I see now, they wanted to take one twentieth straight south and, uh...
No, they wanted to take one twenty...
I mean, north, north, not south, north, north, I see, well...
And that's where, that's the way they were going, and Kevin, who's their site person, he had said, he sent out emails to people on the ground there telling the drivers that they were going back.
Five seventy? And then put around the fourteen and then north, okay.
Someone getting confused on school.
No?
Yeah, because the, the guy, the main guy down there from, either Massacre or whatever, he said that the, some county guy stopped him and said we couldn't take the road.
Yeah, but we don't, what county person that was?
And when I talked with Kevin, he said there wasn't, he hadn't heard of anything, he had told his guys to stop that.
This, that gets a few, confusion here, that the, the, uh, wind tower people probably tell their people not to do that, trouble is, when we got other civilians coming through there, they see that, they may think that applies to them also.
Yeah, I don't...
Well, that ain't good, because somebody like Sharon may want to drive their semi down one twentieth north, and they see a sign, think they can't do it, right?
I wonder if they want to stay off of that, because it's probably more expensive to replace them with that. Isn't it the best one?
Oh, did that one?
Yeah, 'cause it's off, it's off, they're, it's not on a route that's been, they shouldn't have been going up one twentieth.
What Kevin said is not a problem, he just tried to go back down the road.
Yep, and he sent that out internally before we...
Well, as long as our own people that are connected to the wind towers know that they can travel, that's...
Yeah.
We need to know, tell them that somehow.
Yeah.
That, 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 in other words, that doesn't apply to everybody, that...
No, just the project people, it's not our sign, we didn't put it up.
Yeah, but the public doesn't know, but the public may not know that.
Yeah.
Well, they, well, somehow we need to correct that for them.
I can go back through there, I would just through there on my way out over to here, and go back and take the sign down, but...
Well, you're, you could, I don't...
I put it in the minute.
You can put it in. Well, I, uh, I don't know if the minutes are gonna...
Signage and, and not requirement, but basically, but...
Yeah, exclusively, exclusively wind farm vehicles.
Yeah, but that sign, what's it called again, that sign, say?
No construction vehicles.
No construction vehicle applies only to wind tower construction people, right? Or, or people, or if we, do we have local vendors probably hauling for them too?
Yeah.
Contractors?
Contractors.
Um...
The Smoky Hills project.
Who are...
For the Smoky Hills project, but not to other civilians or citizens, like, if Sharon wants to take a load of cattle in a semi going south up on one twenty, if you can do it, you can come back that way too, right? With load, loaded, if you want to do it.
No construction vehicles.
Well, okay, how about a...
Take the loader.
Yeah, loader, there you go. Whatever, that way, we got, because we want the county, because citizens to think that whole road shut down, but it isn't.
No.
Okay.
And we might put on there something about this, that wind tower, like, the wind tower people ask the kids to them, because otherwise, you're gonna have people in here complaining because...
Now, the wind tower management asked for this to be, uh, I would say something like that, yeah, wind tower management requested that be done, so their own contractors would not take one twentieth nor, and have them go around, I don't know if you want to put all that in a minute, but that explains to the public what's going on there.
Doesn't the RMA identify what roads they can and cannot travel?
Probably not.
Fortunately, they haven't given us all the routes yet.
But they can travel any public roads or legal even.
They're supposed to keep...
It's gonna buy them out, so he's probably...
Yes, okay, well, we'll move on.
I've got a philosophical question for you. What purpose do we serve to have you in here every week rather than every month? Do you need the direction that you get every week, or can you do it once a month, or whatever you need, or do you need, you're supposed to be the manager, or do you, you don't have to come and ask us permission unless you got a major issue, do you?
Well, I feel like when I haven't asked for permission on things, I come back, get my hands slapped.
I can, I can come every week.
I can come once a month, it's, you're my boss, you tell me what you'd like me to do.
Well, I, I think you have quite a bit of information.
We just give the status reports.
Not on everything, but there are a few things on here.
I think, well, go ahead, carry on, I, we could discuss that later, Jim.
There's...
We're bordering on micromanaging, and we can't do that. If we're gonna pay you to do your job, we all let you do your job.
Yeah, but he's just learning, he's only been in there six months.
That's for the...
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Travel agreements have been returned to us for signatures, and then these books, we need dated and signed, for Michael's, for the Truck Point Project, we will hold on to a few and give the rest back to them.
There's two up in your box, but one of them wasn't realized, so the product just pulled them in.
Okay.
Travel, travel.
So we went paying until we got them, and then...
These will stand as agreements, aren't they?
Yes, they're agreements that we discussed and sent out, believe, you've already received a few in the mail.
Yeah. Yeah. See, the key thing is right here, is the two dollars, and then the three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
That's rough.
Yeah, right. Okay.
I move, we approve these gravel agreements and sign them.
Okay, we have six gravel agreements here, from different individuals, different removal purchase agreements. Uh, I'm gonna second that.
Do you want to name?
Name, yeah, we can name.
In expression, also following, so I can-
Okay, we have six different ones, we'll name who they are, and, uh, this agreement is made effective March tenth, twenty twenty. And there's one from, uh, Tip, Tim Shaw, and, uh-
If you read the front page, it'll tell you.
Yeah. Oh, okay, the agreement shall terminate on March thirty first, twenty twenty two.
And then right there, Tim Shaw, or is it Timothy Shaw?
I have Jeremy Rosebrook in the Hall Hill Ranch.
Okay, hang, hang on, let's, let's get Timothy Shaw first.
Yeah.
And when did it expire?
Timothy Shaw.
In thirty one March of twenty two.
Okay, and then you have Jeremy Rosebrook with the Hall-
Rosebrook and the Hall Ranch, and it will be effective today, is that not correct?
You don't have to worry about that affecting today.
Okay, and the expiration date is the thirty one, the March of twenty one. I have Thomas Alm and Glennon, and it is terminate on thirty one March, twenty twenty two. And then I have, uh, the Whackers. Uh, anus whacker accident, and it terminates thirty one March, twenty twenty two. And I have Barbara Holmes. It expires thirty one March, twenty twenty one. And finally, we have Mary Jo Simmons Irrevocable Family Trust. It expires thirty one March, twenty twenty two.
Okay.
That's all. Should be six of them, two of them expire in twenty twenty one, and four of them twenty twenty two.
Okay, did we, never did officially approve it, did we?
No, I did the motion.
Okay, and I'll second the motion. We have a motion seconded through. These six gravel removal purchase agreements, all in favor of that?
Aye.
I, motion carried, no problem. Did he then, Brennan?
Uh, they come back to me.
Okay. Do you need, do you need signing Kirk and Michael books?
You have the signing date.
Or what are they all about?
They're for the Tuck Point project.
Tuck Point?
Is this for all four, or just the two that he's gonna do?
Just the two that he ordered.
Well, the other two are, you, you don't need any approval on them, right?
Okay.
You're doing, the other two, you don't need any approvals?
Yeah, the signature page.
Right here in the red.
Should be, please sign.
Right, the, uh, Lincoln County by title.
Yep. That would be it. Just the red, the other one just says to complete, and that's already been completed, so, red would be right here.
Yeah, title, signature title. Uh, just need one, me?
All of them.
No, all five need.
But I mean, uh, one commissioner?
Um, well, you need a motion to have-
Yeah, yeah, right. Well, we have these five different documents. Plan specs, contract documents for these stone bridges.
Um, it's the same document, it's just five copies.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, like, Brennan will have a copy of the contract, he will have a copy while we, or not, sorry.
So, we need this thing, okay. I'll make a motion to, uh, sign these plan specs and contract documents for construction of Lincoln County Stone Bridge Repair, project number one six zero three eight zero eight dash twenty four.
Waiting on fingers to look.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay, I was just gonna, yeah.
Okay, second.
We have a motion seconded to approve these plan specs and contract documents for construction of Lincoln County Stone Bridge Repair. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Just sign here.
I like it when you read off the front, so maybe just-
You what?
I like it when you read off the front, because I still read.
Good, I, well, I try to read off the front, so I know what I'm doing, otherwise I don't know.
Yeah, I'm willing to have some in here, so if you can hand copy it all.
The red one, the red pad.
Just flip to it, and then-
Red one, right here.
The others, like, they just fill out, yeah, the, the other two used to have to fill out, and they're sorry to mark them.
Do you know, if, I think it's in my office, when I started, I thought you-
I didn't put my title, so, no, no, you don't need that, I don't know.
Do you know if he needs a project extension, should he be, must we start talking about?
Tanner or?
Yeah.
No one had it.
Is he replacing it instead?
Some stone will be replaced, but I don't believe any detail, I'm just going to go right through.
I'll just go up in under windows in case.
Okay.
Because I don't know what all supplies he, if he has it, or if he has to buy it, he has to, I don't know how they do it.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Brennan.
Yep, and then Tanner emailed me, I forwarded to the commission, OS sixty five Bridge, Iowa, western part of the county, that big one that's rated three times now. He was asking if the commission would write or get that letter, as well as himself writing it, but letters of support for OS sixty five, and also get letters from the public, supporting why that would be a benefit for the local economy and the community to get that replaced, that helps.
Letter recommendation from-
Letters of support from the public and the commission for-
And how much was that one gonna cost us? That was pretty expensive.
Well, if we paid for it ourselves, three quarter of a million dollars.
Quarter of a million, and?
Three.
Three quarter, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. So, I know, no grant money, or no grant money?
That's what he wants letters of support for us, for filing.
Okay, okay.
A cost share program. It helps you get selected.
Want to just hear about that?
I believe, I don't have any mail coming, it was, I think April twenty first is when the project is due, so.
Would be, uh, assisted, if we had the Russell County letters too?
Yeah, it, it wouldn't hurt.
Help the grant, probably, wouldn't it?
It wouldn't hurt it.
Is that right at Russell County, isn't it?
Just before it.
I know where that is.
Yeah.
Yeah, they do, Russell County, Russell County.
Yeah.
Right by Lucas over there, like.
Yeah.
It runs very quick, too.
Yeah, but almost to Russell County, I can say.
It's about, just under a mile short from the county line.
So, if we did write that letter, then you'd apply for the grant money?
We're gonna apply for it anyway.
And how much, if we got grant money, and you got some, how much?
They get an eighty, twenty percent.
They would pay eighty, we'd pick twenty?
Yeah.
So, that's three quarters, and we pay approximately a hundred thousand, or something.
Hundred fifty.
I think this is the same grant name type of last, I think that's pretty much the approved, to apply.
I think we approved it before, so you just, yeah, can-
Letters of support, it, it will-
Can you do the letter, write it up, or, or do we need to do that, or what?
I can.
If it would be due, then you can do that, you can afford, and then you'll, yeah.
Since it benefits two counties, could you do that letter, and then we could just review it and sign it?
Yeah.
Maybe have a, now, that, that stuff illegal here, is it, that we have to have an attorney review?
No, it's just saying that why we would want this, why we're applying for this, how this would help.
Okay. No, that's-
And the pub, public, letters from public do help as well, but little landlords, or little anyone.
Well, if you wanna lobby for some of them landlords, I want it over there, or anywhere, like in here, too, that'd be good. Yeah, can you do that, write up a letter?
Yeah, I can draft one up.
Then we can, uh, review it and sign it?
Yep.
Okay.
I can draft one up and have it-
I think we re, re-approved them before.
Yeah.
But at least-
Last time Tanner did.
At least the application for doing it.
Yep.
Yeah.
Montana was here last.
Right.
So, for, for the volunteer firefighters that I have on my crew, they have a two-hour call-out window. One of my employees, he's an EMS in training, he asked if that would be the same for emergency call-outs. If he was here in county, if he could assist for those call-outs, helping our ambulance service here in county.
Oh, so he should be, must go out, just like fire department guys can go out.
He's taking a class?
He's taking classes now.
You're asking, can he take off to go to the class?
No, 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 just if there's an emergency call here, how our fire depart, our, my volun, employees are fa, volunteer firefighters.
But if he's taking the class, he won't do that for a while.
Just when he was done, he was approached by the ambulance director, who'd asked him, asked me if I was all right with it, first of all, and then asked the commission.
In other words, if he, and he, an individual, when he takes his class and gets completed, then he wants to know if there was a call for emergency, man, EMS call out, he, would he get to go out for a couple hours?
Could he go to that like our firefighters, your volunteer firefighters?
Yeah, I, I agree, I, I mean, I, I don't care.
Well, that's policy.
Is that policy okay?
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
To take the class, no.
But to, uh-
To respond as a, as a first responder, yes.
Okay.
The KCHA spring meeting is in Manhattan, uh, May eleventh through thirteenth. May eleventh is a full day of classes for new supervisor training that Norm Bauer has highly recommended. I attended when I spoke with him last.
What's KC, what's that stand for?
The Kansas County Highway Association.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think you should go, if you want to, go here. We need a motion.
It's in May.
No.
We don't need a motion, yeah. Anything you can learn?
Yeah.
Be fine, as long as it's not a trip to Paris for a month.
Manhattan.
Okay.
And then, I wrote up last week, the culverts, commission made any determination on.
Oh, who should pay for culverts, and who should get them, and all this?
And, are, we do, a per twenty feet or-
Have you checked with other counties, what they do?
The other counties, people have to write and submit a letter.
They submit a request, or per, for, request for a culvert, and then they, each, the commissioners then review it, each one?
The highway department reviews.
Well, the highway department reviews it.
But they, the costs are all in the individual.
Costs all in the individual, labor in, into the culvert, physical culvert itself, huh?
If it's a secondary one, yes.
If it's a first one, the county pays for it?
The county pays a portion of it.
What do we do now? We do that now?
We do twenty to twenty-four feet for a section owner.
Free, the culvert?
We provide twenty feet or twenty-four feet.
And we do the labor too?
Yes. If they, they want more than that, then we just charge for a band, if it requires band. Because the pipe comes in twenty, twenty-four foot, thirty foot pieces. If someone requests a thirty foot piece, and we have a thirty foot piece, we would just charge for six feet. If they want a thirty foot piece, and we don't have a thirty foot piece, we would charge for a band in six feet.
How many requests do you get, like, a month or a year for all this, I guess, just approximately? Ten, twenty, thirty?
I've had four so far.
This year?
In March.
In March, four for a month, or, okay. Is that about normal, since you've been here?
A little bit less than normal.
I was just curious how many a year we would do. If we're not doing that many, I don't think it matters that much, but if, if some, some people want ten, you know what I'm saying, like, last week, your point guy's got a lot of land, and he wants ten of them, even though maybe he has that much property, a lot of citizens may think he's getting more than his fair share of-
And that's just-
Public support, or, yeah. I don't know, do you have any input on that, Jim? I would put, table it again till Alexis gets back, maybe we'll discuss it more. I think our current policy of providing one, one time is okay, and then after that, we should do it, kinda what we're doing now, I think. I don't know, I don't wanna make the decision here. Why don't, why don't we table that again till she gets back?
Okay.
Well, it's gonna depend on the need, and who's asking. You'd have to have more than one per section, because you have different landlords, you might have a different circumstances, or very incidentally, uh, while you're passing it out. The last Farm Journal had an article in there about some Yoke localities are using ninety-foot railroad flat cars for their bridge faces. Do you see that, or?
Yeah, we've been using those. We have them up on X-ray.
Okay, I didn't know you did that.
Yeah, we talked about that last time.
Using railcars, yep.
Those railcars, and the-
The ones we put in on X-ray were eighteen thousand dollars.
Yeah. How's the, any more update on Dave Bell's thing?
We're waiting for him, he's gonna cut the ends off.
Oh.
And then, weather permitting, we would-
Work with him, okay. I didn't know if there was any more status report, okay.
Nothing on that.
I feel important to say, back to the employee question, they're not allowed to double dip, so they can't get paid by you, they can get paid by the ambulance. So, if they turn in money, they won't get the ambulance rate, does that make sense?
Yes, that's how it is for the volunteers, right, when they have to take their two hours off, yeah.
So, they don't get their five dollar, back to the front, huh?
Yeah. So, the first one, that is the road width material. So, adding up all the miles on the chart behind you, with what my employees have marked, where material is needed, and yourselves have marked what is needed. The top four columns are just examples to show you how, if these roads keep going wider and wider, how much it increases the material cost, just because of the volume, major increase. But estimating on what, where the roads are, their width, and what's needed. If we can get everything out of our own quarries ourselves, that's where that five forty-five comes from. That's just the material cost, no labor cost, and loading it, hauling it, pushing it up, reclaiming the pits.
Just our existing material costs for our gravel pits?
No, this is what, to do the repairs for the, on that map that's behind you, mark on all the major routes.
Uh, material.
What my employees have marked, and you, yourselves have marked.
But the material would be coming from?
If we can source all the, no, if we can source it all of our, all of our own pits.
Oh, okay.
That's what the cost would be.
It would be, okay.
Just the material alone, no labor or time in it at all. And we can table this till next week, too, just, I wanted to give you something to say.
And currently, how much do we budget for, uh, material?
Two hundred.
Yeah.
Two hundred to two fifty.
There's no way you could get through this many miles, though, right?
No, no, this would be, this would be a multi-year project.
Multiple-year project.
Like, more than two?
Yes, more than two.
And on your road width, what's the normal road width that you, that we do, we deal with?
You want it twenty-four foot wide.
Okay. So, that's, so the twenty-four width one is?
Yeah, this is just showing you, so when we have roads that are twenty-eight feet, thirty feet wider.
So, we have different sized roads, what we're saying, depending on what they are. If they're dirt roads, a little dirt road, or, or a wider, major collector road, then, okay.
Just taking in width creep, when the graders keep moving it out. And do you have a plan to go back to its original width, and then clean the ditch, put it back?
Yes.
Stretch it from twenty-eight back to twenty-four?
But we can table that till next week.
Yeah, yeah, with some good information.
Wanted to give you an update on it.
Okay.
Then the other page was.
Your, uh, page two.
Pay sale, with the requirements for each step listed there. Is there any changes you would like made to the steps?
Well, we've got this based on years of service, your steps.
Experience, yes.
But what if a guy has three years of, not superb service, just, well, you gonna automatically promote him?
No, that's where that checks and balance from the GS system come in.
So, if a guy walked in off the street, and you handed him this, he'd say, well, if I do three years, I get three pay raises automatically.
Two pay raises.
Or two, but this looks like an automatic thing here. And I think you want something upon, uh, satisfactory, uh, a way of judging whether it's satisfactory service or superb service, or, what we don't wanna do is reward just getting by service.
Yeah.
Now, if somebody came to you and said ten years' experience, would you already put them in?
You can move them up.
Would they, would you hire them in to say as a five?
No, because they'd have to be, they can't get above level three until they complete the local road courses. So similar with the GS system, you can move, you can hire in up to a level three out of their system, based on prior experience.
So even if you had twenty years' experience, you're gonna come in at a thirty?
You'd have.
One problem with that is you might hire some expert who's really good, you know he's good, and so then this would just discourage him from even coming to work here, because we.
They're not, they're not applying here.
Well, if we was gonna give them the hired money, maybe they would.
If they've got twenty years of service, even at our maxed out one?
They ain't gonna apply here for that.
No.
But I'm just saying.
If they could go around a piece of equipment at a mine site and start out near our top pay scale or above it, very shortly thereafter.
Unless you had the fourteen dollars for your family health plan on it, then that's, you're competitive anywhere with that.
Yeah, it's, I paid similar rates when I worked in the private industry to what I pay for the county. And my insurance, insurance coverage, I paid less out of pocket than I do for the county's program. Big companies do pay a portion.
But anyway, I don't want an automatic, you get a certain year, and no matter what you've done, the way your job, you get, get a pay raise, and that, you can't, you just can't do that. We gotta put it on a performance basis, or skills basis, or something that we can measure besides the time clock.
I like that number four, though, where they have to complete these courses to, you know, make sure they're competent, you know, operating equipment and doing, knowing how to build a road, or a bridge, or whatever.
Yep.
It's kind of tough, because of our position, like you just stated, we, we can't peg compete with the private sector, not for a major construction job, if some guy's got fifteen years, because they're gonna be making a hundred thousand a year, probably, or more.
They're not gonna be looking here anymore.
Yeah, if they're on a major deal, and we can't compete with them.
No.
So we gotta have to have our own pay scale, which you kind of got here, that, that deals with our situation.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's not too bad, Brendan, I don't, I mean, Jim may wanna, I can see Jim saying he, a little, instead of just ten years of service like number five, we should say maybe, and proves he's very competent at doing this or that, or something, you know. That could get subjective, though, you know.
That's why, that's why we get objective check marks on there, where you can check them off, so you did this, 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 and you could include your subjective by basing it on his, uh, annual reports. And you could look at the annual reports, if he's not improving every year, then that's not a satisfactory thing, you should show improvement from your supervisor. And that can be objective marks based on subjective system, and that's not bad, I think that works. That'll let somebody look at him, see if he's doing just the job right.
In a way, I agree with that, Jim, I agree with you, because, uh, you can have a really good, smart person, young, say twenty, out of high school, twenty-one years old, twenty-one, really smart and good, and you want to keep him, so I could see moving him up the ladder faster, because of competence, than some person that, you know, we have guys that have been there ten years, fifteen years, who aren't bad guys, but they just go through the motions, and they do their job, but they're not really ambitious to move up, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so I, what I submitted originally back in the thirteenth of January, I had it, instead of steps, it was years or points, and numbers, and basically, if someone had done satisfactory job for a year, they got a point, or they completed these courses, they were a point. So that's why the numbers were broken up, where a year, year of service counts as a point, completing these courses counts as a point. The commission said they didn't want it like that, they wanted it step one to step nine, so we're going back again.
You can't play this, Timmy.
You need some minimum time, otherwise, in three years, it gotta be a step ten.
Well, I agree, and that's why three, one year, one year of service is one point, and that's why I had this as points there.
I, I kind of like this, but I kind of agree with Jim, if we have the real smart person, say young kid, I shouldn't say kid, but, you know, we want to keep good people. So, so maybe we should raise them up more, you know, faster, probably, because you, you reward your good people.
Yeah, so if you just change where it says step to points, and then change that to a zero, one, three, six, ten, fourteen, eighteen, twenty-two, and twenty-five, and count all that points, and you earn a point for completing a year of service and doing well. You could earn another point for completing your road scholar courses. You can get another point for.
What if they already come in with courses under their belt?
Then they would have that, they could have that point to start out, to start up higher.
Does it have to be specifically road scholar, or is it just, essentially it's saying that they had had, like if they had a paving class, or not paving, because you don't need paving, but whatever, one of their classes was listed, if they had something that was equivalent.
If they had something equivalent, that could count towards that, we can shift it.
I think this isn't bad, but I think always, always you gotta be flexible, and I think that would be.
If you just change those.
Yeah.
Instead of having that number there, you can just make these points. And so you start at zero, one point, three points, for one year, three years, just say that's points. Because that, that was sort of how I had this set up originally, and the commission said they didn't want that, they wanted step one to step nine.
Because we want, we don't want you to be able to bypass the time criteria.
I agree, and that you can, you can earn points by doing exemplary work or completing time, completing the relevant courses.
In a way, I don't think this, this is good, but, uh, we always have the option, like you could say, this guy's really good, you could come to us and say, he's really good, and we can just go, we can, we can use this as a guideline, but we don't have to live by it. We think somebody's really good, we can make them up from a three to a six.
Technically, no, you can't.
You can?
No, we've adopted this.
Well, then, well, then we need to be able to do that.
The question that I have is, is the one year of service, and each of the years of service that says complete, is that with Lincoln County, or is it just in the field?
I figured with Lincoln County, to an extent. I mean, if someone comes in with twenty years of experience to us, I can't give them twenty years complete on here.
That's right.
But I can give them up to a level three, and then they could start, and they could have three points coming in. So if we can change that from years to points, they have three points, so they want to be a level four, they need to have six points. They can earn another point by working towards getting their coursework done, or being an example.
But I wouldn't like to see a guy from Mitchell County who has five or six years' service up there, come down here, and we start him out at a three automatically. I want to see what he can do, I want him to work his way into.
I agree.
Now, if he's got no master's degree in road grading, then we ought to look at that, but my concern is, we need to do this slowly over time. Otherwise, you're gonna have everybody come in here and they get jumped up, first thing you know, they've been here six years, and they're getting paid for ten, step ten, or whatever. So, I like the time, that's good, we just need to have a qualification in there saying that your promotion is based on an extraordinary completion of satisfactory, uh, work that determined by the supervisor.
I just want to get it finished and done, so that way it can, we're looking at putting this for this next, this March payroll, so that way we can have it completed.
We're gonna make the March payroll.
When they approve the pay plan, but they haven't approved the pay raises or steps for employees, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, I probably won't make it for March.
Well, then, can I request fifty cents for Steve Weber completing training on the excavator? That was held off in January because we were putting the pay plan together, I had incorporated that with his new rate, his pay plan, and now it'll be four months since he's been trained on it.
Did you see the main operator on it?
Him and Greg are, they've both been using it.
They dug any piling, or planted any piling yet?
No.
So they've just been digging with it?
Dug culverts out, building our sand bunker, cleaning out ditches with it, trimming trees, placing large culverts.
We need a special tool to do piling, anyway, we don't have that tool, do we?
No.
The motion to, when you guys promoted Stephen, included fifty cents once he received a certification, so is there a certification?
Is there a certification?
No, it was under myself or Gordon, we thought he was satisfactory trained on the piece of equipment, or to do the job right and do it safely.
Should I read it?
Yeah, would you please read it? When was this, back in February?
Um, eleven.
Back in December.
And only because I did a minimum, or, I did split brings, so we don't really, so. Again, not against the raise, but. Okay, the motion allows James Gableman move to offer employment as bridge crew foreman to Stephen Weber at sixteen fifty to be raised to seventeen upon certification by the highway department of excavator. Seconded by Ray Neil, and the motion carried. I don't know what certification of highway department of excavator means, but.
I guess we let that up to Brendan, that's, you were, you claim he's certified, we don't have, he didn't take no tests or whatever.
There's no tests to take.
Right, so that's some class that we paid for, and then he got certified, like a CDL or something.
But that, what that motion said is, that you need to come in here and say, I certify that he is proficient and can operate the excavator.
I certify he's proficient, can operate the excavator.
I mean, that's what we asked you to do.
Yeah, that's what I, I did that back and forth to you.
When you come in here and certify that, then we're good to go, but the motion's made and approved.
And I think he just told you that, so.
Yeah. Do we need another motion to say the raises are?
I, I believe that we do, just because, but, but once you guys discuss something, when is it effective?
Okay, I think it'd be effective then this month.
So, February twenty-sixth?
He's been, he completed it, and that's why it's factored into the pay rate for the January one, so that would be, they had been using it on projects throughout December and still currently. So he was satisfactory trained by the end of December. I had included that fifty cents in the pay rate position where he was going to.
For this year?
Yes. Since this isn't being adopted yet, it will be.
That could be the twenty-sixth of February, without any.
That, that would be different.
I mean, you can go back to the twenty-sixth of January, you can go back to whatever you want to, I just want you to tell me what the.
I would do the twenty-sixth of February, since he just announced it to us, and that, so that, then the payroll's next week coming out of that, right?
I make a motion, except Brendan, certification that he is qualified to operate the excavator, and to provide him with fifty cents effective twenty-sixth of January, uh, twenty-sixth of February this year.
I'll second that. We have a motion second to, uh, give this, uh, raise to Stephen Weber, fifty cents now, effective February twenty-sixth. All of you say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
And the last thing I had was the plotter you had asked about.
Yep.
It's not in the highway department, it's not, over there, economic development, yeah, that's what David does, it'd either be economic development, or behind the courtroom.
And it's non-operational, man, obviously.
Oh, that excavator's working, okay?
Good. It, it's been a big help, the project we've used it on so far, just.
Is it hard to move around from job to job? You just put it on your trailer and haul it around?
We put it on a lowboy, that's.
Lowboy trailer?
That's, yep, that's what lowboy trailers are made for.
And it's handy, it works out fine, I know. You only have two people that operate it, then?
Just for right now, yeah.
Right now, okay. Mostly your bridge crew guys.
Both bridge crew guys, the other one we use for more of the tree trimming.
Okay. The one with the wheels, is that still sitting out there, Rodney Von things, Phil? Okay. Okay.
South, yeah, south over by you, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been gone for a few months.
Okay, I haven't ever bought that, it's been a while since.
We had to take it, we had to take it to Great Bend to get the wiring harnesses replaced on it.
What's the status of your pile driving assessment, accessory assessment?
We haven't purchased one yet. We're waiting for a project where it would be utilized.
Like, build a bridge, right?
The bridge that we're building right now, that's on the record we built, is one twelve, yeah, one twelve, just east of town here, that we're still waiting for the engineering drawings on, or I'm still waiting on the engineering drawings on, we use.
Have you been pricing any of that, what's that tool called, that you put on your excavator?
So I have been pricing some.
What are they called? Pile driver?
Sixty thousand, sometimes more, sometimes less, depending on what model you get. So the one that Ottawa County has, it's just hydraulic. Engineers don't like that, because to measure the force of your piling, you measure how high the hammer bounces, with it being hydraulic powered. There's nothing to measure there, so that's where some engineers are a little leery on those style.
So, what's the price it's ranging for him from new to used, fifty thousand to a couple hundred thousand?
Yeah.
And used, it'd be fifty grand or less?
Should be, yes.
Or they, were, is it good to get used or not?
It depends on how worn out the seals are.
You'd have to check it, okay. Like anything else, you have to look at it, okay.
Because, I mean, you can buy one for twenty thousand dollars, but if it needs total rebuild, you're another eighty thousand into it, and you could have bought a new one for the same price.
Right, okay, right, okay.
So we've been looking more at the equipment needs.
Anything else?
Nothing that I.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Gersman, are you ready?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
You knew me back here this afternoon, I saw there was something on a agenda for pay scale.
No, uh, we did that, she was in here this morning.
Okay.
Now, she's doing a draft draft, has she been working with you on that?
She was the, the whole county pay scale.
Well, she's doing it in different departments, but I didn't know she was also coordinating with you on that.
We just talked the one time.
You might want to show her what you showed us, and. Yeah, okay. Thanks, hi, hi, how are you?
Hi, Randy?
How you doing?
Yeah, good.
Good to see you.
Thank you.
How's, uh, how's, hopefully we have no COVID-nineteens in Lincoln County, right?
Nothing official, and of course, you have to get approval from the state to do a test, we only have one test kit, so I don't know, you know, maybe we should use it on you, I'm not sure. You know, I'm just.
Well, hopefully, I don't, I don't think I have it.
No, no, I'm sure you're fine.
What, is, why is it so hard to get the test kits?
Don't, I really don't know, I, 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 I don't know, I have not, I'm trying to.
Have you, are they hopefully getting you more this week, or?
I don't know.
Who knows, I know, I know, I'm sorry, I'm asking questions.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's just rolling so fast, and people make announcements, but then the follow through is just like my announcements, you know, it's like, yeah, you can, I'm closing the Sylvan Clinic, can you get free transportation if you call us, and I don't even know the number of the person that we call yet, so, you know, there's work in progress.
Sure. Okay, well, what, what are you here for, Mr. Garrett, David?
Uh, did you want to give them any information about the procedures in place for the hospital regarding the?
Eventually, and then maybe say a little bit about financial stabilization and how, but how this will affect that, the coronavirus thing will affect that, so. Do you think I should go first?
Yes.
Yeah, go for it, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, uh, we have been, and really, it's the clinical leadership of Dr. Chima, and then Krista Hasemeyer has done a great job of keeping up with things as well. Um, they kind of put me to shame, but, um, uh, there's a number of things that we are doing, uh, following what we believe to be so far best practice, although that is always changing. Essentially, we are limiting public access to the hospital and the clinic, um, and there are very rare extenuating circumstances where we would allow visitors in. Um, if you come in, if you're an ER patient, you can have one family member if they do not have any of the symptoms. So, um, everybody who comes in is being screened at this point, um, whether they're a patient or a, um, a family member with an ER visitor. Really, that's the only visitor that we're gonna be allowing in, uh, for the most part. We are closing, locking all entrances, and during, uh, the day, Monday through Friday, um, patients are, um, uh, directed to go to the main lobby entrance for the ER, have procedures or physical therapy or something, uh, or going to the ER. Um, for the clinic, we are locking that down, except for the north entrance, which is the handicapped entrance. And at all of these entrances, everyone who comes in will be screened for the COVID virus, um, COVID-nineteen.
It's great with the symptoms and not tested, right?
Correct.
How do you, how do you, what's?
The symptoms?
Just like, check your fever, check your temperature?
Yes, um, right now, and actually, this is a moving target too, um, and when you get into the fine detail, but what we are screening for right now is, if you have a fever, if you have a cough or shortness of breath, if you've traveled outside the US to one of the, um, countries that's had a lot of these cases, China, Italy, Spain, or, um, in, in-state, if you've been to Washington State, California, New York, also the areas of travel is changing all the time. I believe they're adding a few counties in Colorado as well, which is, may affect us more. And, um, and then, so if you have these symptoms and you've traveled to these areas, you will be a person, um, uh, of investigation. Um, and we will be calling the state as to how to proceed. The other, uh, issue is if you have a fever, cough, shortness of breath, and have had direct contact with a person who is diagnosed with COVID-nineteen, um, that is another, will put you under the category of a person under investigation.
Do you accept them into the facility, or are you telling them to go home?
Um, it depends upon, uh, uh, the seriousness of the case, of course, we are going to provide. Um, it depends upon, uh, uh, the seriousness of the case, of course, we are going to provide care to patients. Um, as much as possible, if it seems to be a mild case, uh, recovery at home, uh, isolation at home with our management over the phone or coming in, I, I, I don't, I, we really are having trouble if they've got the virus, I only have one negative airflow room in the whole facility. And so, protecting other patients and protecting my staff is an issue, we're, we're looking for mobile negative airflow devices to see if we can't create more space where we can have these patients. I, I think it's just an unknown what's going to happen, um, and, and I think there's a potential that we have patients that have it, and they just, for whatever, you know, just haven't fallen into these categories of, um, uh, where we would ask them to be tested, we have one patient that, um, we are currently looking at and may be calling the state to do the test on this person. So, it's, it's a moving target, and managing this, um, uh, this is just kind of a first phase, half a phase, probably. So, that's a good question, and I don't have all the answers. Um, if I can go back to this, um, the Lincoln County Medical Center will be open, uh, changing the hours a little bit, new hours are simply eight to five, Monday through Friday, and that's to help us manage, um, the coronavirus screening, um, all patients are being screened there. Um, you can avoid screening if you contact the hospital or the medical center before you come in. Um, give us a call, and, uh, we'll assess your situation and can make a determination over the phone. Um, Dr. Chima is also prepared to provide medical guidance over the phone to the extent that that's appropriate, and, um, I've also been asked, the Chimas have also asked me to, um, acquire telemedicine services, so that we can further help patients, uh, in their home, if they're, you know, fairly mild cases, uh, to help them through telemedicine, I don't have that service yet, but I am seeking that, um, researching that. Regarding Sylvan Grove, did I talk about Sylvan Grove Medical?
Sylvan Grove is closing.
Closing, yes.
Close the clinic.
And we're, um, going to, uh, we've been advised, um, actually by David and Alexis both, um, that we have some pre-transportation services here with Lincoln County, and we would like to, as, we will be coordinating with that service, um, for our Sylvan, for our Sylvan patients. And that is about it, um, you know, there's the hygiene things that we're reading everywhere that are good practices, social distancing, and, um, so far, um, I mean, this is just really rolled out late last week, and I, I gotta tell you, you have some wonderful staff here that are just rolling up their shirt sleeves and getting it done, and not pan, staying calm, and.
Good.
And as much as we can, um, I would say, uh, one of our biggest issues is, um, getting adequate, um, personal protective equipment for people, that everything is limited at this time.
Like for masks and gowns and all that stuff?
Yes, yes.
We have some. List together, I think, for you?
Um, I have some, I have an informal list here.
Yeah, but, but, Madonna gave me the list from the lab and the tornado shelter.
Oh, you want a list from me for that?
Yeah, I have to provide it, that's what she gave me, I have to give this to the state here.
Is there a way?
Okay, do you want me to fill something like this out, or just give you the information part?
Well, just fill something out, and then I'll.
Very good. What, okay.
Free form, just whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Just whatever P P E supplies you have over there.
Excellent.
Could we request more from someone, Jim, or?
Well, we had needed to make a determination, once we have a case come in, then we can, right now, we just need to inventory and see what we have.
All right. Now, is the list what we would like to order, or is it what we have?
No, this is on hand, this is on hand.
What we have on hand, okay, and it's P P E?
Once we declare an emergency, then we can start doing stuff.
Okay.
Uh, if you have some P P E that has expired.
We do?
Uh, don't throw it away because they're finding that it is of use yet, and, uh, unfortunately, in the county, we have destroyed a bunch of expired P P E that we shouldn't have.
Well.
The deal on this is, when they gave it to us, they were raising our stockage level, we were supposed to maintain our stockage at that level by, uh, getting more stuff as we use it, we're supposed to replenish it on our dime, not on theirs. So, while it was a one-time issue, it was intended to be our basic stockage level from then on. So, we haven't stuck with that, because they've thrown stuff away and used it, didn't resupply, so that may be an issue later on, but that, once we declare emergency, then we can get in some of these problems.
Okay, very good.
But I would really like a P P E inventory from, if you don't mind.
Absolutely, absolutely. Um, the other, um, item that I, um, is there a deadline on that, would you like it today, if possible?
No, no. Next day or two, whatever, this is drop everything, do that.
Okay.
Unless we get a couple sick people in, it'd be an issue.
Got it, got it. Um, would you, well, and I will tell you, Madonna gave an excellent presentation, um, to our medical staff, um, last week, she did a wonderful job, and, um, we're following up on a number of those things. Um, in regard to the expenses, um, oh, here's your notes.
Thank you very much.
So, um, we, uh, thanks to the county property tax, we had a positive month in January, and, um, I am encouraged, we also have a slightly positive month in February, which I do not entirely expect. Um, but, uh, and I don't have the report here, but there's a number of things that we have been doing, both to increase revenues, as well as to reduce expenses, um, to, to, to get at least at break even, if not a little bit of a bottom line. Um, that said, um, I do think we may need, um, some, some help, and, um, uh, unfortunately, my CFO is, is out ill today, we hope she doesn't have COVID virus, um, but, um, I don't think she does, but, um, uh, in any case, we're putting together our budget for this year, and, um, we'll be able to analyze for you, uh, if there is a need, uh, before we can, you know, totally up, match up costs and revenues and, and have a positive bottom line on a continuous basis. Then added to that is coronavirus now, which is over and above anything Tanya and I were working on in, in the current budget.
Well, once we declare an emergency, then that opens up a whole another box of dollars that we can spend.
Okay.
We've got declared emergency, Madonna and I have decided that we will not recommend, and Randy determines it, uh, a state of emergency of Lincoln County until such time as we have a patient either in Celine County or Lincoln County. And once that's validated, then we go to an emergency action here in Lincoln County, then we'll be talking to you about what all that means and, and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Does that mean we could get state or federal money, then?
Uh, there are some circumstances, and they waive a lot of requirements, yeah, and that, there's a whole big stack of things that they'll do, and they.
I've heard they would waive a lot of the bureaucracy of policies, procedures that you have to follow, they may just waive a lot of that, so you could hurry up and get something done, instead of have to go through all the paperwork.
Yes, yes. I, I would say your staff here is, is pretty cognizant of most things, they've done a really nice job so far, and just.
Good.
I, I'm, um, I'm really pleased, um, now, we just gotta keep walking through and see what happens.
Yeah, hopefully, we can avoid much, much problem.
I don't know.
Yeah, who knows, it's.
Did you say Lynn or Lincoln? I didn't hear which counties you're talking about.
Uh, Celine County, Celine.
Celine, Celine.
We just decided it, either Celine or Lincoln County, once we have a case in one of them, then that's going to affect everything we do, and so we'll declare emergency at that time. Let Randy do it, he can do it.
Well, I'll do what you guys recommend, you're dealing with it, but, uh, Celine County, obviously, is a big county, population-wise by us, and we have a lot of people go there, work there, go there all the time, so if they would have a case, it probably would mean that we're probably not part of behind, I would guess. I hope not, but, you know, that's probably the thinking behind that.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Madonna, as the, uh, senior medical health person for the county, is actually the person in charge of all of the health stuff under this emergency declaration, so whatever she says goes.
Okay.
And it applies to elected officials as well as non-elected, she becomes a health dictator, in essence, and, uh, that's one of the things that gets rescinded.
Yes, and, but we're, of course, more than half.
And that's, no, then that's, yeah, nothing wrong with that, that's, and we have a right person to do that, she's well into what she's supposed to be doing.
Yes. So, unless there's something else.
I have a question about your meeting, you, you have, tomorrow, we were supposed to have, is it tomorrow or next week?
Next week.
Now, it's, what's the fourth Tuesday, it used to be the third Tuesday?
Yes. Correct.
And now it's the fourth Tuesday, in the daytime of two, yeah?
Yes.
Two thirty.
Are you gonna have it?
Two thirty, okay, sorry.
Are you gonna have it at the hospital, since you have everything locked down over there?
Oh, I hadn't thought that far, that's a good question.
We could have it like here.
Yeah.
Which, I don't know.
Let me, uh.
Or, or somewhere here, even in this room, as far as I'm concerned, if nothing else is going on.
Good point, I totally missed that, thank you.
Well, yeah, because, uh, we could have it there, but it's not so easy just to walk in and out of there right now.
No, no.
So, that's next Tuesday, at two in the afternoon, two thirty?
The board, yes, the board acted to change its regular monthly meeting.
To two thirty?
Third Tuesday of the month to the fourth Tuesday of the month, um, taking a recommendation from the Kansas Hospital Association that we provide our agenda and our board working packet to the trustees and the commission, a full week in advance of our meetings from then on, so that we'll all have the time to do the necessary preparatory work. Um, the C E O and CFO are excellent for being available and answering questions if you have any.
Yeah.
And the idea is through better preparation, we'll be able to be more deliberative, uh, and forward-looking in our meetings from this point forward.
Yeah, sure.
I really, that's the way I like to manage anyways.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, I'll be on top of things. I was just curious, okay, but I, I was, one, some concern of, of all the board members, uh, can they make that date, cause I know some of your new, uh, board members are, have daytime jobs, uh, that.
Right, and, you know, honestly, I don't, I, I don't know who I should be coordinating with, but, um, we've been, you know, Dave has been, um, quite active, as well as Bob, and I forget his last name.
Burdison.
There you go.
Yeah.
Um, the other two gentlemen, the, I, I think Cody came in to ask about it.
Cody Flynn. Now, he's a teacher thing, yeah.
And the other, um, person, I don't think we.
Jerry Land just resigned today, we just got a letter from him.
From the hospital?
Yeah.
Board.
Okay, cause we had not heard anything.
And I don't know why, he just said he was going to resign.
We hadn't heard.
Cody teaches in at two o'clock, interfered with him some, but I don't know why they can't work something out, one meeting a month.
Yeah, it's two, we're currently, it's two thirty, and we'll probably, uh, discuss pushing it into, past the end of classes on school to accommodate, uh, Mr. Flynn's.
That was the one, the only concern I had, I personally don't have a problem, it's just I thought those, some of those people may not be able to make the daytime hour.
Right now, he might miss the, uh, approval of the minutes.
Okay.
But, uh, I think at our first meeting, we'll, we'll take that into account, uh, as soon as he's sworn in and joins the board. All the other board members are, are fine with, with the change, and, uh, have been able, are able to, uh, both meet during the afternoon for the regular meeting, as well as special meetings, uh, and, uh, so, I think we'll be fine going forward.
Okay.
Will that work for you as well?
Yeah, yeah, I, yeah, I'm flexible, I was thinking of the other, some of the other individuals, but no, that's fine.
Good, good.
Next, so next Tuesday, and, uh, two thirty, it's the fourth Tuesday, which is next week, yeah.
Yes.
And, yeah, you may want to check on your meeting place, because.
Good, good.
I guess we could still meet there, but we'd have to go through all the, the, uh, screening process, right?
Um, yeah, frankly, yes, so.
Well, I was gonna say, if you want to change, you could probably meet here in the courthouse, maybe in this room, if that's why, whatever.
Sounds good.
Or, I don't know, unless we'd have to reserve it with Dawn, I shouldn't speak up and say, well, but I, or, or the other meeting room also, I, I just thrown out some recommendations here.
I'll, I'll coordinate with Chairman Houston.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
He'll, he'll notify you what, what we decide, I'm, I'm all in favor of meeting here, rather than the hospital.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're not on lockdown here yet, I guess upstairs is, up at the courthouse, or courtroom is, not lockdown, but they got a mask, I guess they were, so.
Because of the, the, the COVID, uh, impact on our operations, we've gone, I know, over our fifteen-minute allotment, but I, if, if it's okay to go another five minutes, I wanted to.
We have free time anyway.
Okay, great.
We have some more time, we've.
We've got a nice gazebo out here, it'd be really nice for an afternoon meeting.
No, go ahead, David.
It's snowing too.
All righty, I'm up for outdoor meetings, we might have to worry, figure something out for executive session stuff. First of all, good morning, and thank you for appointing, uh, me to the Lincoln Hospital Board of Trustees. Trustee Houston, Serena, and Weber have been very welcoming, uh, to Mr. Burdison and myself over the last two weeks, and we've already spent over five hours, uh, meeting as a new board, defining, analyzing, measuring, uh, and acting to improve and control the hospital's financial workings, and we're looking forward to meeting the two new appointees, whoever they may be, at our next, uh, upcoming regular meeting, or certainly, uh, Mr. Flynn. Um, I can report that I'm very confident that the actions and steps that the board and our new management team are taking will stabilize the hospital's finances going forward, while continuing to maintain and improve patient safety, quality, and value of our services. This is our mission, after all, and it reflects our values and vision for providing health, wellness, and medical services for our community. We've begun to focus on this mission and to refine our strategic vision and plans, and to govern more effectively as a board. As we focus on the future, we have begun to discuss finances and understanding the inner financial workings of how a critical access hospital functions from a financial standpoint. Our new, our new C E O has suggested that this is very important for a hospital board to do regularly and continually, and both she and CFO sites have begun helping the board do this. I'm very impressed with our C E O and CFO, and I'm very confident in this new management team. We have changed our regular monthly meeting issue to the fourth Tuesday of the month, um, and this is to allow us all to work a little bit harder, uh, and be more prepped for these meetings, because there's an awful lot of important things ahead, uh, that we have to act on. I brought you a draft of our Board of Trustees Governance Manual, and it's just a draft, and you have a lot more to fill in, but since you will be, I guess, trying to help us recruit a new trustee for the board, um, this has the job duties and responsibilities in it, it's quite substantial. Um, and, uh, I recommend that anyone who's considering this job, read the, the manual, so they know what, what the job entails.
What to expect, yeah.
Oh, yeah, and I also brought a little light reading for any applicant, it's called the Critical Questions Every Board Needs to Be Able to Answer. It's a hundred and thirty-five pages, a lot of small print, not many pictures or, or graphs or figures, and this is what the Kansas Hospital Association recommends, that even an applicant to the board has read, studied, and become familiar with in order for them to perform effectively on the board, and I brought you this copy, so you have a little homework for our next meeting.
Okay.
There's a substantial amount of information and training and skills that a trustee needs to be effective in these responsibilities. And education, and most importantly, continuing education is a must, and that's why I originally scheduled this slot to, to, to speak to you. No matter how long a trustee has been on the board, the regulatory and legislative framework for operating a rural hospital is constantly changing. Just last week, the Kansas Legislature moved a bill out of committee that is designed to provide substantial state funding and grants to rural hospitals like ours, to find more efficient models for healthcare delivery in the future. In order to capture these grants and innovate like this, and to ensure our future ability to provide our citizenry, local healthcare service options, trustee boards must be fully aware of the what at all times, so they can make sure their management teams maintain plans of action and execute the how. The only way this occurs is if the trustees are constantly defining their needs, analyzing them, and measuring them with information and knowledge they acquire by constantly educating themselves, and whether that comes from their management team, or professional associations, and educational coursework, or experts they bring to the hospital to, to train them, uh, we need this in order to effectively govern the hospital. We simply need a high level of education to understand state and federal laws and pending legislation, regulatory and reimbursement structures, hospital finance, and a range of general healthcare-related terminology and information. For example, here's just another handout that the Kansas Hospital Association has, and it's the vocabulary that we have to know cold to be able to really interface with our management team and our providers at the hospital. There are many books like this that a trustee has to become familiar with. Fortunately, the Kansas Hospital Association provides a wealth of training and education opportunities for trustees. Unfortunately, this involves expenses for trustees like myself that the hospital does not have the funding in place for, at least in its current calendar year. Luckily, the Kansas Legislature expected that counties would want very well-trained and educated trustees, and to see that they be continually trained. and to see that they be continually trained in the ever changing regulatory and legislative landscape that affects our hospital. KSA nineteen forty-six oh nine gives the commission the authority to directly reimburse trustees for itemized and reasonable expenses they incur for keeping themselves fully informed, trained, and educated with all this current information. Education costs, however, can be substantial for trustees in the hundreds of dollars per year, per individual, many hundreds. The statute even gives you the authority to pay trustees, but I'm not here to ask to be paid, only to ask that the trustees use this statute so that I and my colleagues may begin seeking reimbursement for personal expenses we incur related to education, outreach and resource materials necessary to do our job. I brought you a copy of the statute, which is KSA forty-six oh nine. And this simply allows you to treat trustees like you would any other county personnel, so that we incur expenses according to county policies for per diem, allowed mileage reimbursement, and course training materials, fees that we have to pay to attend these courses that we could seek reimbursement for. Naturally, at your end of the month meetings, you have full authority to look them over. You can approve them or don't approve them, but I'd like you to at least consider making it a policy that we could begin doing this. Um, there's already a district meeting in Bellevue that the KHA has and recommends trustees attend that include, uh, workshops, including dealing with strategic planning for hospitals. In May, there's a, a, a meeting in Hayes, which is designed for trustees to get up to speed on the law and the legislation that affects their job as trustees and how to run the hospital. And these expenses could be fifty, hundred dollars or more for individual trustees as we go to Bellevue, Hayes, Wichita, Topeka, Lawrence, or these webinars sometimes charge a fee just to watch the training session online. There are also experts who can come to our hospital and provide onsite training for trustees, but they would charge each of us a per trustee tuition fee. But if the commission wants to reimburse us for those fees, then we could begin bringing experts to us to bring us the information and know how we need to run this hospital, as, as a trustee board needs to govern it. The board was unanimous in voting to ask me to make this request, and I believe all the trustees are ready to begin educating and immersing themselves with all this information and education that's available to them. And I'm hoping that you can fund this small request and follow the statute that the legislature intended. As you know, the new board and new management team acquired a serious financial situation, and we are fixing it. But the hospital doesn't have one penny in its budget this year for education and outreach expenses of the trustee board, and I'm hoping the commission utilizes this statute to provide direct funding for these trustee expenses as the legislature intended. If you utilize this statute and allow trustees to beginning submitting itemized and reasonable reimbursement requests, this will allow the four new trustees you're appointing, as well as the three existing trustees, to become highly educated and knowledgeable in this field, and allow us to begin tapping a wealth of information from other hospital officials and experts in the field. This will also help the existing three trustees who I know are also interested in doing this, and I hope you will support your appointed trustees, execute our mission, our values and vision for the county hospital. Thank you.
So you currently have no budget in, out of your hospital, uh, budget to pay for this?
Not one penny.
So you would have to, you want, you're asking for the county commissioners us to pay?
It's the same amount we got in our budget for, isn't it?
What's that?
For hospital education. We have no money in it either right now.
Well, we have training for ourselves for like going to commissioner classes and stuff, where we have a budget and we use that for.
Let me ask you another question. Uh, rather than send all seven, why don't we send one and you come back and train? That's called training the trainer. Why is that not an option?
It definitely is. Um, I would recommend having at least three of the trustee members at a time attend these because in some cases, there are concurrent sessions going on, and you can't physically be in all of them the way these, these work. Uh, webinars, that certainly would be the case. Um, there's copy costs. Um, to give you an example, I've already run off about seven hundred copies at my own expense just to provide governance manuals, the critical questions books and other information, just to share what I brought to the board. Between now and July, even if all the trustees were to do just the calendar of recommended training sessions for KHA, it would be maybe twenty-five hundred dollars. If three, only three or four of us did that, it would be potentially half. Um, there's also some training that we probably need to bring in-house to the board as soon as possible. And those, those can obviously add, you know, a thousand or two thousand or more, uh, to do those things, and that's just through July. Um, uh, you know, I'm gonna do whatever is necessary, uh, to, to fulfill my duties as a trustee. Um, it'll be a little bit easier to do it if I know that if I do incur personal expenses that are reasonable, that I can at least submit them as an itemized reimbursement, and at least you have the statute that says you fully have the authority to, if the county can find the money somewhere, you could, you could provide trustee.
Well, that's just, I don't know what, maybe Don would know, what, what budget we could get that out of, you know?
Well, this year, we're pretty much, don't have it. We'll have to think about it for next year, but what we would like to do is if you had some specific things you wanted to do, then we'd have those, we'd evaluate, and we'd have to find some money out of somebody else's little pot of money to shift yours, and it'd be a matter of evaluating priorities. I understand you have a high priority, but it may not meet up with, uh, grading another road somewhere. That's, which is why we have to make these decisions, but we would certainly entertain a potential, uh, schedule of expenditure to see what you got and see how we can work that into our priorities.
Fantastic.
Yeah.
All in favor of education, but you know, there's such a limited pot of money.
I think, so, yeah, we're up for education. I can't speak for Alexis. We need to consult with her and also, but, uh, if we could find, find some money somewhere here, and we're not against it, I don't think, we'd just see how much, again, and how quick you would need it and for what, sort of, you know, what training.
And when we submit our budget for the next calendar year by June first, we'll definitely include, uh, an account, a budget account for.
Training.
For, for trustee expenses to do this. It's just that right now, we're kind of in a jam because if you don't, I don't want any trustee to have to potentially not avail themselves of this kind of necessary training and education because it's an out of pocket expense.
If, if it's helpful, so now I'm sure you got hundreds of classes maybe you could go to, you know, just like we do, go to county commission classes and stuff. You know, not all of them are, I don't think that helpful.
There's one.
Some are, some are.
There's one, one session in Bellevue, um, that KHA is sponsoring. Uh, that would be very recommended to go to. Um, that's just mileage and, you know, what, whatever you would provide a county employee to go for a day in Bellevue. I believe that session is free. Uh, I believe the session in Hayes may have a, a fee. I mean, I'll, I'll get you that, a list of schedules. I think some of these fees are like sixty-five dollars a person, plus the cost of just getting out there and spending the day there. Um, and, uh, it's just, I figured I'd get ahead of this and ask you because even if we're just doing these every month or two, the, the costs do add up, uh, to, it, it's, it's something that I'm hoping that the county can find moving money around to try to give us just a little bit of, uh, support over the next several months, uh, and then.
Yeah.
We'll budget for it maybe in our next calendar, in our next.
We'll look into it, especially when Alexis comes back, cause I wanna get her input. She's out today, but.
Sure. If, if I could add a little something, um, uh, this, this board, uh, is, is in particular need. And I, I think that, um, you know, from my experience, it's not unusual for boards to, um, uh, manage in the way that we have seen. Um, on the other hand, um, uh, getting more up to speed and, and, and being more active in these things, um, uh, is, would, would be very helpful in their acting more as, uh, as a board should and could. Um, so, uh, it just gives them, uh, the, the, I think there's particular need here, given the past practice of the management. And, uh, so, I would just encourage that, um, and I would say, you know, I'm not familiar with Kansas, uh, but there certainly are things too that are better than others, and we can scope that out. And number two, I would say, is that sometimes it is really good to go to these things and network with people, particularly people from the association or, um, other people that are strong board members in other organizations. So, uh, the travel sometimes is, is a good thing. Not all the time. You don't need to do, go to a single one.
We support that, it's just a matter of how we're gonna pay for it. We gotta take money away from you, and that's not always an easy thing.
Let, let me leave you with this one last, last thought. There's actually a return on investment, could be substantial for this. Just to give you an example, and I'll give you a copy of this. Last week, uh, Troy Raymaster's, um, committee, he's the chairman, just passed out a committee, a funding bill, uh, to Innovation Grants, uh, Fund that will be hopefully voted and approved by the full House and the Senate, signed into law. It provides a substantial pool of money for rural hospitals, just like Lincoln County Hospital. And it's the kind of thing that I would have preferred to know about it when the committee was still in markup and amending the bill. Um, it requires match. Well, we have a lot of flexibility between our hospital foundation and even the wing farm. And if there's a way to take a dollar from a web grant and turn it into a dollar from state funding, these are the kind of things that trustees need to get ahead of and make sure that the legislation that's coming out of Topeka works for counties like Lincoln, and in order for us to even do that, we have to be educated in the law, legis, how legislation moves and how it affects the way we operate the hospital. So I just think that if you find the money and can help us over the next six months, uh, every dollar you invest in your trustees is gonna produce a substantial return on investment for the county as far as fight, saving those dollars and cents in the long run.
Okay. Yeah, we'll look into that. Let us review this and.
Appreciate an exact list of what you want and all that, to give us something to work on.
Can I email it to you through the commission email, and then you guys can just, when time permits, look it over, or do you want us to come? Or do you want us to come back in another?
No, you can send it on email.
You can email.
Right.
We just need specifics, and then we can make some decision on whether we.
Yeah, like. Like what classes, how many and how much, you know, just approximate, approximate guess on money in the next six months. Like you said, three, twenty-five hundred, or three go, maybe fifteen hundred, something like that. Then we could have at least, we have something to shoot at here.
I'll do that.
We'll have to review the budget and where we're at on spending and if there's a place in there we can get money out of.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you.
And I would say this, this board has been totally supportive of the progress that we're, we've been able to make. Very, very important to the progress.
Well, thank you. We're trying to. We wanna see the hospital survive and succeed, and I think it will. I think it will. It's just, we're going through this area now. So, thank you. Thank you guys for coming. And, uh, I guess we'll do a lunch here, huh? It's about ten after lunchtime adjournment, or, uh, take a break. So any, you got anything done, any input or? I don't know of any fund. You know this budgeting stuff of finding any money for the. First of all, they're not really a county, part of the county budget, except for the grant we give them, so they're not, you know what I'm saying? They're not like we could transfer money to them out of another thing because they're not a county department. Like, you know, I don't know, maybe, whatever. So, I guess we'll do a recess.
What do we got after lunch?
Ronda, right, huh?
Okay.
The one? And then, uh, that, Mr.
And she knows that you're gonna be gone, so they will plan on at least being ready by one thirty to.
Okay, and I, again, I have no experience at this conference, but as quick as it's over, I'll be back.
When are you going to the conference?
The conference calls at one o'clock, so I have to be down there at four to kill them.
How about if you just recess until one thirty, I guess, then?
Yeah.
Recession till one thirty, huh?
And then if you're not back, it just won't.
I'll let you know.
So we won't reconvene until.
Well, yeah, well, let's just do that. Recession till one thirty, and if you're not back, we'll just.
I'll let you know when I get down.
Yeah, we'll reconvene until, we, until, uh, until you get back. We'll just recess until you get back. We'll shoot for one thirty.
I'll just leave all that stuff right where.
Mr. Havers not coming, and Mr. Mrs. Hegman, Hegman's already been here, so really, we're just, Ronda writes, and really, we're done, I guess, for today.
Keith got the same conference I got. We're all on the same thing.
Yeah, sure. Well, do, keep up the good work, Jim, of doing your emergency management job, wherever you got put on. So I guess we'll recess till one thirty. I'll just leave the stuff here, I guess. The thing with the hospital is, I don't, I don't know how we can.
Well, it depends on what they got. I gotta run down.
Yeah.
I'm not a hundred percent sure though.
And you're here to talk about your conferences. So this is, uh, so me reading, that's why don't you just tell us what, what you got going there?
I am basically here today to show you how we would like to be, put Link, Lincoln County's tax and parcel information out of the web. Is, just to keep it simple. This is all about serving the public, uh, saving your office holders, allowing network, uh, in terms, in terms of an example of basically Joe Public walking in and going, hey, I wanna see what the tax is for such and such parcel, or, you know, I wanna see, or a real estate agent coming in and saying, I wanna see the comp sheet, or property record card, and so on and so forth. A lot of this stuff is really, just like I said, some of this is public, some of it is not public, and I'll talk about the not public part in a, in a bit. But for now, let me just talk about the public part of it. So I'm gonna use Smith County as an example up here. Uh, basically, from Smith County's website, you can notice we have links for parcel search and for tax search. So when I click on tax search, for example, it brings me upright to this screen right here, uh, and this is just most, anything over here on the tax search part of it is all public information. It is, is what comes down to. These are the most commonly used search variables for finding something. So let me just, rather than we talking about it, I'm just gonna do a search. So I'm just gonna do a search for last name Bergman, for example, and I'm just gonna hit submit. And what it's gonna do is it's gonna go through Smith County's, uh, database, and it's gonna pull me everything that has the last name off Bergman.
All the property parcels that they own?
All of the par, whether it's real estate, if, if you can see right here.
Okay.
So it's pulling me everything that has to do with Bergman, last name Bergman, whether it's two thousand nineteen, eighteen, seventeen, all the different years, so on and so forth, whether it's real estate, whether it's personal.
How far back?
Ag land. Typically, however long, how mu, how many ever years you have on your server, once we've set up the template, it doesn't cost us that much more to pull out X amount of years.
Because somebody's guy's been here fifty, sixty years.
Well, but you don't have fifty, sixty years worth of record of data.
Of data.
Right. So more, typically, it's six to seven years.
Okay.
Is, is, is what comes down to.
Okay, thanks.
So, uh, I'm just gonna go ahead and, for example, just click on the first one for Dean's, uh, prop record here. And this is, I'm just looking at the tax right now, is, is, is what I'm looking at, just to let you know. And we also, while it's pulling that up, just so that you know, we then go ahead and take the tax information and we tie it into the parcel information as well, okay? So, it's just pulling up just for two thousand and nineteen here, okay? It's pulling in all the assessed valuation, the mill, the, the ag, the, and specialist, and all of this is public information. And once again, we're saving, serving the public, saving them getting a call, asking for this information, and so on and so forth. Okay, what I also wanna point out is to you two things. There's a link automatically that says, hey, if you wanna look at the parcel, and we'll get to that. Look at the parcel information on this, or if I wanted to look for additional years just on this person or this parcel, once again, I'm pulling in all of the tax information for the different years.
For that same parcel?
For that same parcel.
Okay.
It is, is, is what comes down to. So this is how they had it all the way up to two thousand and ten, so that's what I'm pulling in. Is what comes down. Now, right from here, it, I'm not gonna click on parcel information. If you also notice, back on Smith County. If you also notice, back on Smith County's page, this was the tax search, and this was the parcel search, okay? So, and I'll show you. I mean, rather than just clicking on this, I'm just gonna go into parcel search, and if you clicked on parcel search, it'll bring you up to a screen that says, is this a registered user, or is this Joe Public? Okay? The difference being, if it's just Joe Public, then we're gonna show you everything that is public information. If it is a registered user, then I can also, it's up to the county, show you sales information. And if you have the document module, I can go ahead and show you comp sales, or cost valuation, or the property record cards, or the income valuation, and so on and so forth. That is not public information, okay? That is stuff that typically end users, such as fee appraisers, real estate companies, and so on and so forth, they subscribe to you at the county level and pay you a fee for the convenience of doing it.
They have to have a license to get this information.
Like a real estate license?
Real estate or fee.
Just anybody can't get that.
No, that's why it's not public. And that's why he's saying it's for, they have to pay a fee to get that information. Or, you know, they don't, they don't have to pay the fee, and they can just call me for information too.
Sure, absolutely, absolutely.
They don't have to have that fee or that amount.
But if they wanna get onto this database, then they'd have to pay a fee.
Right.
Okay.
Right, right.
Now, how would you determine who's, uh...
They have to show us their license.
So that everybody, you'd have to have some type of license to get on it? Not just real estate, but?
It's gotta be, yeah.
Oh, like a real estate broker or?
Broker, yes. They can, they have their license, they can show that. And even, even if they come in our office and want information, I have to, they have to show their license.
Isn't that kinda unfair to the regular public? Why does a Realtor get priority over the regular public?
That's the way the law is.
Really?
Yeah, it's not public information.
Yeah, but, but the law's favoring Realtors over the public.
It's, it, that's why it was wrote just for...
Yeah, and I'm not, I'm not arguing your, what you're doing, yeah.
It's supposed to be for our purposes and fee appraisers for that, for...
But I think the general public would like to know if a quarter of land sold by me six months ago, and I'd like to know the price of it.
Sorry, if you're moving, can.
Yeah, but no, but a Realtor can find out.
Sure.
Why isn't their business, why isn't their business my mine?
If their license, I mean, if they have...
That's all I'm saying, Doc. I'm not promoting one like that. I'm just curious about the law. That's fine. Go on, I don't, I don't mean to cause a trouble here. It's just weird that, uh...
No, it's real, and that's how we have to buy it.
Realtors lobbied, obviously, for that.
Sure.
That's why you buy it for a dollar and other valuable consideration.
So, for right now, I'm just gonna act like as I'm Joe Public. So I'm just gonna go into the public search, is, is what it comes down to. And obviously, as required by law, the first thing you're just gonna have is the Open Records Act statement saying, you know, don't take this as the gospel truth, and this is to the best of our abilities, yada, 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 since the last time the data was pulled from the server, kind of a thing, you know, is, is what it comes down to. So you go ahead and you accept that open record statement. And once again, over here in the parcel search, at this point here, we're really, we're pulling information from the server in Topeka, from the Orion database, is, is what it comes down to. And what I want you to pay attention, once again, in terms of doing a search, these are just the most commonly used fields. This can be customized to however you, at the county level, decide, or whatever. So once again, I'm just gonna do a search right here for Bergman again. And do a submit, and, and, and over here, then I'm just going to go ahead and click on this parcel information for this residential. And this, once again, what I'm showing you here, this is all public information that we pulled down from the Orion database. So, everything that is public information, we're, once again, tying out there. You could have also gone ahead and, when you clicked on this tax information right here, you could have clicked on that parcel information, and it would have automatically just pulled in that parcel. Same thing as to what I did right here, okay? What I want you to notice is, what you are missing, or whatever, or what is not shown on here, is sales information. Because like we discussed, sales information is for...
Licensed Realtors.
There you go. Thank you. So, or fee appraisers, or whatever it comes down to. So let me go ahead and act like as if I am a fee appraiser, and I'm gonna go ahead and log in here. Once again, the Open Records Act. And if you'll notice, obviously, I have a lot more different arguments and a lot more fields available here in terms of my search argument, if I wanted to filter in terms of sales information. I did not have any of these arguments in the public information. So I'm just gonna go back and just do a search once again for Bergman again. And I will click on that same record right there. And what you will notice is, what I want you to notice is, obviously, I have sales information shown, is, is what it comes down to. Now, you would also notice that I, I have, I can do comp sales, okay? Because I can go ahead because I'm a registered user, and at this point, I can pull in all of the comp sales, or the property record cards, and so on and so forth. Any document that, as it pertains, that is not public information, I now have access to it.
So, I was gonna ask some of the other counties, what, do you have any idea what some of the other counties charge for the, for the license deal?
He asked me that same question here earlier, and I'll tell you that...
I was gonna check on that in my...
It is anywhere from $200 to $400. The ones obviously out east, like, I know, I remember a county gets a mint. They just have so many. I mean, they just literally pay for it themselves.
Okay, I, I was gonna ask, I was gonna check in some of the counties to see what they charge.
Well, why don't you ask Mitchell, ask Mitchell or Smith, where, or, and see what they charge, yeah, and just see what they charge. And, and, that in a nutshell, is, any questions?
No.
Go ahead.
Not to disrupt or anything, but that public information that you just showed, that is the same thing that is on that ORCA website that the state has out there too.
But do they have as much information as?
Yeah, it's just about the same. But, so, you, you know, from getting information from PVD, it goes to this website, it goes to all the websites like that, 'cause there's different ones and stuff. So that information comes directly from Topeka, from their database. It's our information, but it's on, on Topeka's website, or, I mean, on a server.
So what's a typical fee for a registered user? Say a bank wants to become a registered user?
Like I said, anywhere from $200 to $400.
A year?
A year. It just depends on who, it's up to, to the county to decide.
I'm just, I'm just curious.
To what, you know?
Yeah, you're right. That's what I'm saying. It's up to the county what they wanna charge, you know? But it's also up to the county if you even wanna put that out there.
Sure, absolutely.
You may not even up.
If you notice on the price, you know, that modular is for the registered parcels, it's a setup fee of almost $5,000. So, you know, if we feel like, if we feel like that we don't, there's not enough use for it out there, we...
You don't get that part of it.
We don't have to get that part.
So really, for the tax search, that's like eight thousand bucks? And then the parcel search, that's another eight thousand?
And then the major...
And then if you wanna register, that'd be another five thousand?
Yeah, sure.
If you did everything that they have prices on here, the one type fee would be $25,980. And the annual fee, then, if you did everything that was on here, is $6,152. But here, your annual fee is for each modular, so, so, you know, depending on what, what you want on, I mean, what you want.
What options are?
Yeah. Now, I don't know if he, if this question's been asked, taxes, you can go back by a few years. Parcels, the information on parcel is one year. There's no historical information on, on parcels. And like on parcel search, it's the appraised value. Your tax, when you pull up your taxes, it's the assessed value. It's not the same value as what's on the parcel search. Because that's the assessed value, the hundred percent. And then on the, on the...
Tax.
Tax is assessed. So let's say you have a parcel that has ag land, a house, and outbuildings. Well, they're all at a different assessment rate, but it's just one total assessment amount on the tax deal.
You're absolutely right. For the whole parcel.
Right. You're never gonna get a breakdown of what the assessed value was on the house, or the assessed value was on the outbuilding, or on the ag land.
You're absolutely right.
You know, the only place you get the breakdown is on the parcel search, and that's the appraised value, not the assessed value. So you're, you're looking on two different values on this. You know, the hundred percent, the appraised value on the parcel search, with the tax side, it's just the assessed value. So I just, you know, I wanted to...
I'm so glad you brought that up. No, absolutely true.
Yeah, because that's, that's the...
Because I literally had a case where we went live with a county, and they were like, uh, it was like, oh, stop, 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 that's made up of different parts.
Yeah. You're talking two different, you're talking two different values on two different things.
Okay.
That's why I want you to make, you know, yeah.
I'm so glad you brought that up. You don't, I mean, I never would have thought to bring that up.
Thought of that, because, yeah, they're two different things.
Questions?
I don't have any more, Jim, do you?
No, I would jewelry.
Well, it looks like it's good information.
Absolutely. And it's, and like I said, it's, it comes down to this, hopefully, we provide value enough to where you say, okay, you know what? This is something that will serve the public well. And that's what it's all about.
Do you, you do, obviously, this is Smith County, you have, you do a bunch of other counties in our areas?
Yes. In this, in this area, I'm just gonna go, I do Smith, I do Jewel, I do Ottawa, I do Ellsworth.
You do Mitchell?
I do Mitchell, Russell.
No, yeah, Russell you do.
And I'm trying to think if I do Osborne or not.
No, no.
Then they don't have their, they don't do anything?
Oh, no. Oh, no. Clara, I think you do, Republic you don't.
And no, I don't, so I mean, if I'm doing this, for example, for Lincoln County, I can't have Joe Public sit here, and if he's got a land that crosses over to another county, he's just gonna have to go to the other county's website. I cannot show him, you know?
Only in the county.
I mean, I am bound by the geographical border of the county, and that's the only thing that'll show up on this county's website. I can't go across state.
Do most counties opt for all four of these options, or?
Typically, yes, sir.
All of them?
And that's right. I mean, yeah, because you can add a whole lot more, so I literally just went with what I would consider the base.
Okay, well, I don't have any more questions. Is there anybody else? David, do you have any questions, or Mona?
What would be your implementation plan to, to set up the template to pull data out of our county's database?
It would take us a little bit more than normal. Typically, it's about a two to three week turnaround, but because I'm dealing with a new tax database, it has to do, we have to do some massaging. So I would guesstimate anywhere from six to seven weeks.
And once this is set up, that the setup, the contract is set up, will it just be the point, if they're not doing a major change of their own house system, they just pay the annual maintenance and support fee and you keep it going?
Absolutely. And then I would basically, the, the technical team would get in touch with the appraisers' office and the treasurer of the clerk's office, and just say, hey, how often do you want us to pull data? You know, and then it's up to you to decide how often you want it refreshed.
In the initial setup of the database export and coordinate system, how many hours do we typically require the personnel in the appraisers' office to actually do any work, or, or do you provide this?
The only thing she would have to do is provide us with access, and that's it, that's her only thing, so, for one minute?
So about one, a minute of, so maybe it could be conservative, from start to finish, it might, she might need to make herself available an hour or two.
For a phone call.
Okay?
That's it.
So the county will not have to hire a physician?
No, no.
And you access this information, and then put it on your website, huh?
Right.
Then the public could just get on the website on the end of that?
Right.
With, with our county information?
Absolutely. So, for example, right here, with this Smith County, so this is actually Smith County's data hitting our servers, is, is what. So you don't have to buy any additional infrastructure, or anything of that sort. We host it, we maintain it.
Correct, so it's contained.
It's contained.
And then, yeah, well, and then I wanna make sure I heard you correct earlier in the presentation. You were saying that with the counties that effectively license the comp sales data and other information that is not required to be public to real estate professionals, they charge like an annual fee to your registered user? Did I hear, you said they, they, some, some counties are making a mint doing this?
Yes.
Okay.
I would say if you're bigger...
I hope I didn't say something wrong, but, but no, I mean...
But it's, it's a revenue generator.
It's a revenue generator, because I offset the cost.
No, it's not gonna happen here.
No, it's not gonna happen here. Let's get that over with.
Because we don't have enough, I mean, people, you're talking about...
I'm talking about like the Leavenworths and the Wyandotte's and all that.
Yeah, Johnson County, Leavenworth County, those, those they would, they would make them.
But if other real estate professionals in other counties are willing to pay...
Sure.
A few hundred dollars a year...
Absolutely.
For very necessary data that the county taxpayer is paying to accumulate for their benefit, I would just say that I, as a taxpayer, I think that our county should be charging, not just local real estate agents, but especially outside...
If anybody, anybody.
Local, they won't pay for it when they can come up here, and they're here every day.
But exactly, and my, my, my question is, is that, since the CORA does not require dissemination of financial data of people, I mean, you were stating the statute, I assume it was that, why are we giving it away for free then? If we're, we're paying a substantial amount of money to this county department, I personally would like to see real estate agents paying something, and this would, this would be a way to do it.
Yeah, they would have to.
And once, if we, if we put this online, statute does not require you to provide that information to a real estate professional for free?
Yes, it does, it does.
I still have to, if they call me, yeah, I still have to provide the information. I can't just say, no, I can't, if somebody calls me for, well, and I don't do the taxes, so if they called the treasurer's office for taxes, they can't say, oh, well, no, I can't give that to you, you have to pay the fee to get online to see it. No, you can't do that.
But what you said is, I'm talking about real estate professionals that want non-public data. You mentioned you're currently providing it for free.
Yes.
If they come in-house, or if they call her?
Would you be, could you, could you get provision of the statute, section of law that requires you to provide a real estate agent sales, sales data for free?
Oh, I don't have to provide, I mean, not necessarily for, for free, but if they have the license, that's why I said, you know, they come up and, and, like, like they paid for, like copies. Right, right. But like in the ant office, they have a, a public...
Terminal.
Terminal, that they, they come up and look the taxes up. You know, that's free, 'cause they just come and look up the taxes. Now, if I have to do a big search or do a deal, no, we, we, we charge.
Maybe you must, I'm being very specific here, sales data, information that Joe Public is, you, you are not required under the law to provide me. I thought you said that, um, that if they call you, you will provide a real estate professional sales data for free.
I can't, if I email it.
Okay, but you, you, but you're providing it for free.
Right.
Does the law require you to provide that real estate agent this information for free?
No, the law doesn't require me to, the law just requires me to provide it.
But you could charge a fee if you wanted to.
Yeah, I can charge, I mean, if people come in and get copies, uh, I mean, you know, copies of private real estate.
I think what he's referring on is more like, he's getting very specific, if I'm gonna, yeah, because he's wanting to basically make that and say, are we okay charging fee appraisers? Okay, this is how we're gonna disseminate this information.
I'm saying, why aren't, why aren't, why aren't we charging? Given the current system, I realize, I know about the dollar property card, which anyone can pay for, that does not have sales data. I'm talking about that privileged, special, very important information that real estate and banks, banks use.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, I, I see what you're saying. No, when I give sales information to a Realtor or anything, it's a property record card, but it has a sales information. They're getting the same property record card as a public is, except it has sales, the, the sale price on it.
But you said you're not charging them, you said if they call you, you get to give it to them for free.
I don't have to give them to free, but out of the courtesy, I email stuff free. I don't charge it, I'm not charging the cost to, 'cause you're not charging the cost to produce it. So that, because there's not a copy charge.
At her time and...
Yeah, right, 'cause all I have to do is...
But if anything is less than a half an hour, we can't charge for, based upon our resolution for open records.
But, but, but these are close records, they got covered by the Cora.
But they're still considered...
I bet you they are covered under open records for fee appraisers.
Right, right.
We have to research it, I can guarantee.
No, I can't, I can't say, I can't have a fee appraiser who gives me the license and I can't say, no, I can't provide the information with you because they gave the license and stuff.
Okay, but anyway, uh, well, thanks, those are good questions, uh, I don't know if we're gonna make any distinctions right now.
No, 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 more than anything else, just to show you...
Thanks for this information.
Absolutely.
We may have to discuss it again among ourselves and...
Absolutely, that's what I'm here for, and if you have any follow-up questions, uh, please, uh, feel free to reach out to me. And I will be happy to go ahead.
Yeah, we'll talk to you. But thanks for coming, I appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not gonna shake your hand if that's okay.
Yeah, we won't shake hands. Yeah, not the first one, but we won't shake your hand.
You don't get a hug either?
No, sorry, not even gonna do that.
Well, thanks a lot for coming. And, uh, guess, Jim, you gotta get running?
Gotta go.
Okay, so I guess we will adjourn the meeting.
We're done.
Can I have two seconds?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, but, go ahead.
I said valuation's out on Friday.
Oh.
So they should be getting them in the mail today.
Okay, okay.
Will be the one, so, you know, they, my calls, yes, I did send them out and they, they will be getting them in the mail.
Oh, okay.
Um, uh, today. Uh, it went up some, not a big jump this year, you know, our crop lands stayed about the same, pasture went up some and building and, um...
Residential?
Residential houses tend to...
Did they go down, huh?
They stayed about the same, I mean, it varied.
Okay, thanks.
There's not a big, big, you know, big difference.
Not much difference.
No, not a big difference.
Okay, thanks, Rhonda.
We did increase some, but not a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, son.
No, thank you.
And Sonny, we may get back with you later.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm sorry I don't, uh, but she's got my, Rhonda's got my contact information, so if you have any questions?
I'm going.
Yeah, Jim, see ya.
I'll speak to myself.
Do you have one?
Do you have yours?
Yeah.